No money that they think that you could just get a house whenever you want and you can't. And it's just horrible how they treat us. We're treated so horribly. The shelters treat you horribly, they give you horrible food, you know, and they're making money off of you and we don't deserve to be treated this way.
City officials can also reduce the amount of belongings allowed in the public area if there's an alternative storage available nearby. A rally was recently held to have a closed down Westminster Senior Center in Venice turn into a storage facility to help the homeless in that area.
If we were able to use this senior center and people can store their goods here, then those same goods are going to be off the street. That makes it a win-win.
Advocates for the homeless say the law makes homelessness a crime.
We firmly believe that housing is the answer to homelessness and that the city and county and every piece of government must invest in housing and we are ready and willing to build and own and operate that housing as it comes.
I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week. Homeless advocates say any aspect of the law that criminalizes homelessness could hurt the city's chances of getting the federal dollars needed for services and housing. Well, the sky's the limit in Century City as a number of pricey development projects have dotted the area's landscape. Gil Reyes has the details.
Construction is booming in Century City.
People want to have their offices here, they want to have their homes here. In fact, CNN Money ranked our zip code 9067 as the seventh richest zip code in the country.
Development, the topic at the state of Century City discussion. Projects in the works include a $2.5 billion renovation of Century Plaza Hotel, an $800 million makeover at Westfield Mall, a luxury hotel, a hospital, and more office space at 20th Century Fox Studios. Metro is also extending the Purple Line to Century City. It's expected to arrive in 2026.
Having the subway actually land right in the heart of Century City, I think will almost be so in your face that people that really didn't want to take it will say, well, this is just too convenient for me, I have to do this.
Former city attorney and now city controller Ron Galperin has opened the books on city spending on area development. He hopes releasing the information online will encourage more investment and job growth.
Because we have, I think, a tremendous opportunity. We talk about wanting to create jobs in the city of Los Angeles. One of the best ways to do it is by looking at what it is that the city buys.
Mayor Eric Garcetti encourages investors to reserve more jobs for the underprivileged.
Communities of color and folks who are ex-offenders. If we don't figure out a way to incorporate them into our economy too, we'll all have to pay for everything that we're not doing. So it's been a strong focus of mine to find those pockets of economic opportunity, a 10,000-strong initiative to hire 10,000 veterans that if you want to get involved in, let us know. We're already 7,000 veterans hired.
To build opportunities for all. In Century City, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The renovated Century Plaza Hotel is expected to reopen in 2018. Also, Westfield is working with Metro to create an escalator from the future Purple Line stop to the mall. Well, it's a program that's been in the works since 2012, but now it's finally come to fruition. Rasha Goel has more on how local residents are partnering with the LAPD to keep the crime rates low in their community. Frank Peters may be a retired business owner in Northridge, but these days, he's helping keep his city safe.
We just start cruising around, cruising around. When we get into the communities, we turn on the light bar on the vehicle. That lets the community know that we're there.
Peters is part of the LAPD Devonshire Citizen Patrol, a pilot program where citizens work with the LAPD to assist law enforcement in protecting their community.
What's really unique about this division and the command here in the Valley is that there is no other division that has so many residents that step up, put themselves on the front line to protect total strangers.
These individuals that give up their time, once again away from their families and their businesses and work, to come out and to drive around the community to keep it safe.
And not only is it about volunteering their time to work, but they also have to go through training over a few months.
They went through defensive driving training, patrol techniques, training, radio communications training, and officer safety training. They'll monitor suspicious activity from afar and no contact. They're not going to be engaging in any type of enforcement activity. They're just there to be our intelligence gatherers and our eyes for the community.
The program is sponsored by City Councilman Mitch Englander's office, who also helped provide the uniforms and citizen patrol cars. He's confident about the program's success after seeing results from the department's other volunteer program.
In fact, the volunteer surveillance team was recently instrumental in the capture of a bank robbery suspect. We're looking to expand these volunteer efforts in our community and provide a force multiplier.
This department, especially here in this division, makes us always feel as partners in what we're doing here. We've never looked down upon it. We're always as partners in crime prevention here in Devonshire. I'm glad to do it.
There are currently 15 volunteers in the program, but the LAPD is hoping to spread the word and increase that number to 50. Reporting in Northridge, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week. If you're interested in finding out more information about the volunteer citizens patrol program, you can call the Devonshire LAPD at 818-832-0692. The star of Miami Vice and Stand and Deliver is on a mission to help build a lasting tribute to outstanding Latino servicemen. Gil Reyes reports from El Pueblo in downtown.
The USO Canteen Show helped put some swing into what's mostly a solemn occasion, a time to remember some of the bravest Latinos in U.S. military history.
Right now, I'd like to read the citation for one of the many Medal of Honor winners that we have that are Latino in this country. We're disproportionately given many, many medals because I think we're disproportionately right in the middle of it every single time.
Actor Edward James Olmos hosted this annual ceremony in downtown's El Pueblo during Medal of Honor Day. The Medal of Honor is the nation's highest military award. People remembered Latino recipients like Eugene Obregon, a Marine from East Los Angeles who was killed in the Korean War after shielding a friend from enemy fire. He was just 19 years old.
We are so honored to be here with his sister. Let's hear it for Virginia Obregon.
The actor is collaborating with the Obregon CMH Foundation to build a monument for Latino Medal of Honor recipients. This memorial would be built next to the Wall of Honor in El Pueblo, which recognizes the nearly 3,500 Medal of Honor recipients throughout history. Of those recipients, 59 have been Latino Americans. This makes Latinos the largest ethnic group in proportion to those who've served to receive the award. Olmos says a monument for them in Latino-rich Los Angeles is only fitting. At El Pueblo in downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Fundraising to build a monument for Latino Medal of Honor recipients continues. Donations can be made at obregoncmh.org. While LA Mayor Eric Garcetti promotes the city to potential investors, community members and city leaders help kick off a new synthetic soccer field in Council District 9, and another park in South LA gets a major makeover. All these stories in City B. Mayor Eric Garcetti joined global business leaders to showcase Los Angeles' booming economy and push for new investment in city assets. The Regional Investors Conference, held this year in Playa Vista, provides an opportunity for leaders from across Southern California to promote private investment in municipal bonds. This year's third annual conference focused on LA's rapidly growing tech sector and how it increases the value of local bonds. Mayor Garcetti said LA is home to 300 tech jobs as more tech companies such as YouTube, Yahoo, Riot Games, and others are either expanding their footprint in LA or moving into the city.
And they're coming here because if you're a global business and you already established someplace else, you can't afford not to be in LA anymore? And if you're a new business, increasingly, you're saying, that's where I want to be.
Councilmember Karen Price, the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Bureau of Engineering cut the ribbon and helped kick off the celebration of a newly completed South Park synthetic soccer field. Located in South LA, the South Park Recreation Center serves approximately 21,000 residents living within walking distance of the park. The new field completes the first part of a $12 million makeover, which will include irrigation, security lighting, and other upgrades. The synthetic turf will save an estimated 1.8 million gallons of water a year.
There is like no rocks or anything that could hurt you while you walk or slip.
Creating these soccer fields is going to be an important resource, we think, for the young people here.
The Department of Recreation and Parks, Council President Herb Wesson, and the United Neighborhoods Neighborhood Council celebrated the reopening of Leslie &amp; Shaw Park on Jefferson Boulevard. The park's namesake served as the first African-American postmaster for the city of Los Angeles from 1963 to 1969. Appointed by John F. Kennedy in 1963, Postmaster Shaw was the first African-American in the nation to lead a large federal agency. Park improvements include a new custom-designed playground with resilient surfacing, picnic tables, smart irrigation landscaping, fencing, fitness equipment, and a walking path around the perimeter of the park. Officials say park improvements will benefit more than 2,000 youth and their families in the area.
I love it. It was a wonderful idea with all the obesity nowadays and a lot of people complain that they don't have money, they can't afford a gym, and now there's no excuse, you can come and work out, and it's awesome.
Well, for some city employees, work doesn't end when they leave the office. Many spend their off-hours helping others. Anita Bennett introduces us to a worker from the CAO's office who's using music to lift spirits on Skid Row. Music is Calvin Joe's passion, but it's not how he makes a living. By day, Calvin works as a risk manager in the CAO's office. At night, you can find him with his bandmates playing gigs around town, including on Skid Row.
We come here once a month, the Lowell Edward Band, and my bandmates, we've been doing this for about, well, I've been doing it at least for about five years.
On this chilly Friday evening, about 300 men and women listen to the band play inside the chapel at the Los Angeles Mission. A few people in the crowd nod off, but others dance and wave their hands in approval.
We found it to be just an uplifting thing, not only for the folks here, but for us too.
The Mission offers religious services like this six days a week in both English and Spanish.
Normally, we have traditional speakers, like pastors, who come, and occasionally we do have music, and they look forward to that. It's a little different and kind of break it up a little bit, you know?
And with the music, we're still gilding the word, you know?
All devout Christians, the band members say they are committed to helping those that others have forgotten.
We go to the prisons, and so we've done all the juvenile halls and before it used to be called the Youth Authorities, and so we played all in Los Angeles, all the different counties, and we've done some up north and some south.
As the band takes a short break, a member of the group ministers to the crowd.
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Amen.
The goal of the ministry and the music is to let the audience know that life can get better.
It lifts their spirits, and we hope to plant some words of encouragement for them. That's the key.
For this performance, a total of six people play in the band, including fellow city worker David Chow from the Department of Aging. And while they all have busy schedules, Calvin says they make time to visit the homeless.
It's a calling for us. We believe that this is our place, you know, all of us are full-time, you know, working in full-time jobs. A number of us are pastors or worship leaders, but when we come on a Friday night, I think you really meet people where they're needed. This is where it's needed, so that's why we come.
And as the band plays, some of the problems here on Skid Row seem to briefly fade away. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. The Mission offers guests 15 day bed tickets. After that, they can reapply for an extension. If no beds are available, they are referred to other shelters. The Mission also offers a separate two-year drug treatment and job training program. Well, the LA Zoo transforms into Jurassic World with moving, roaring robotic dinosaurs walking among us. Gil Reyes was there when these animatronic mammoths emerged.
It had trouble getting out of the truck, but the most humongous of these fierce-looking robots has finally arrived at your Los Angeles Zoo. A 22-foot-long, 6,700-pound Tyrannosaurus Rex, the king of the dinosaurs.
Life-like, life-size, teeth-bearing, roaring, snarling.
They have invaded for the opening of a new exhibit entitled Dinosaurs: Unextinct at the LA Zoo. Visitors will be able to see how these magnificent creatures roamed the planet millions upon millions of years ago. That's because all 17 robots are animatronic, with ranges of motion that experts believe are how the real creatures actually moved.
We've got cylinders at the joints where we want movement, and we pump air through the system, and it'll turn the heads left and right, bodies up and down, mouths open close, eyes moving left and right, and then we've got little computer brains that give the sound as well.
Two of the dinosaurs, a Dilophosaurus and her baby, actually spit water, so expect to get wet when they wake up.
It's perfect for the hot months. The parents may not, you know, want to get spit on too much, but the kids will absolutely love it.
Crews unloaded the rest of the Dinos that will sprawl over two acres at the zoo's southern end. The walking tour will take a half hour to complete. Other highlights include one dinosaur that visitors will be able to move by remote control, and lessons about endangered animals.
And it leads out right into our California Condor Rescue Zone, so it's a perfect tie-in to show what the zoo, the LA Zoo, does to protect endangered species.
So take the family to the LA Zoo for a fun-filled yabba-dabba-dooh time. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The LA Zoo's Jurassic Exhibit is open now. While enjoying music festival without the hefty price tag, help maintain one of LA's most popular nature preserves, and an Earth exhibit showcases some incredible sights in our own backyard. All this and this week's Things to Do. Join the Palos Verdes Peninsula Land Conservancy to celebrate Earth Day at the White Point Nature Preserve in San Pedro. Families are invited to participate by helping to beautify the native plant garden and trails. Take a hike with rangers through the preserve and enjoy a special art project with the PV Art Center and more. Enjoy nature-inspired art activities and get expert tips on backyard birding. All this takes place on Saturday, April 23rd, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. For more information, visit pvplc.org. For the second consecutive year, the G2 Gallery, El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument, and Western National Parks Association have collaborated for an Earth Month photography exhibit called Earth Month Los Angeles 2016. Earth Month Los Angeles, housed in the heart of downtown LA, hopes to raise awareness about the variety of public lands accessible to urban residents just outside the city. The exhibit is on display now through May 1st at the El Tranquilo Gallery at 634 North Main Street. For details, visit theg2gallery.com. Formerly known as Broke Chela, Broke LA is the rebirth of LA's favorite little big festival. Now in its sixth year, the event is a showcase of the best music, art, tech, food, and vendors from LA and beyond. The festival has grown from 200 attendees to over 5,000 and features indie, hip-hop, DJ, and comedy acts called from an open submissions process. In the group's commitment to the community, ticket and drink prices have maintained competitively low despite a fluctuating economy. This year's event takes place Saturday, April 23rd. For more, visit brokelfest.com. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Saving energy is simple. It even saves you money. Replace incandescent light bulbs with compact fluorescent bulbs. Set your thermostat to 78 degrees or higher in the summer. Weather seal your home. When replacing old appliances, select Energy Star qualified appliances that are up to 40% more efficient and unplug electronic devices when not in use. Visit ladwp.com for more energy-saving tips and information. Save energy, save money.
It all started that one day. I knew then my destiny. To have a career where I can achieve my best, where every day is different, where lifelong friendships are made, where I'm saving lives, and inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie Vandergeest, and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. If you please take your seats. If everyone would please take their seats. It is Tuesday, April 19th. Like to welcome each and every one of you to your council chambers. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. All are welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll? Why don't we try that again? We have a little glitch. Let's see if we can clear that up. Try it again.
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Busqueino, Cedillo, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue Wesson, 12 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bloomingfield moves, Englander seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves, Ofero seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, that leads us to the flag salute. I'm going to ask Mr. Englander to lead us today. If all would please rise.
President, yeah, if we can get everybody to please rise, as we pledge our allegiance to this country, our great flag, please join me by placing your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Let's move through the agenda.
Mr. President, there's a request to refer item 26 to the Housing Committee.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items one through five are items noted for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on one, two, three, and five.
Okay, let's vote on four. Let's, oh, Mr. Corretts.
Could I ask for Mr. Krikorian that we continue item 1A for two weeks?
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order, and that'll be May 3rd, I believe it'll be the date. Okay, let's vote on the other item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Items six through 25 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members. Mr. Corretts.
Item 12, please.
Item 12, please.
12 for Mr. Corretts. Mr. Englander?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five for Mr. Englander. Then let's prepare to vote on the, Mr. Sadio? No, let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's move to the next section on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-seven through 38 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Rue?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Mr. Corretts?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Mr. Fuentes? Thirty-two as well? Mr. Sadio?
I move for item 30 to adopt the CIO report that has been circulated.
And what was that again, Mr. Sadio?
To adopt the CIO report that's been circulated, has been circulated.
And there are cards on that item.
Okay, we'll hold that. Do you have other cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items except item 37.
Let's vote then on 37. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentation. All special or general public comment?
Mr. Bloomingfield?
To ask for a motion to reconsider item 1K from April 15th, which is a lien issue. The idea would be to rescind the lien and continue it for 30 days as we've been having conversations.
Okay, let's do our first vote now. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And you wanted to continue that, Mr. Bloomingfield?
To rescind the lien that we put and continue it for 30 days as we're having discussions.
So, Mr. City Attorney?
We, do you? Just to continue it.
We voted to reconsider, now we vote to rescind and then continue?
By reconsidering it, it's before you now, as it was on Friday, so just continue.
Yes, I wanted the date.
Thirty days would be May 18th.
Okay, so that's done, May 18th.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Buscaino, we're at our presentation portion. Would you like to start it off today? Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin, I'd like to call my Reserve Officer of the Year here at the City Council, Officer Mitchell Englander, to join me. Give him a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues joined here by our colleague, Mr. Englander. I'm proud to stand here today and recognize my fellow Reserve Officers for their extraordinary commitment to public safety and their service to the City of Los Angeles. Please, come on up and give him a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Come on up and join us. Squeeze in. Come on up. April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and it's fitting that we recognize the most steadfast volunteers I know, and that's the LAPD Reserve Officer Corps. LAPD Reserve Officers is the largest, the largest police reserve unit in California, and our reserves receive the same training as full-time police officers. Even Chief Beck began his career as a reserve officer. Along with Mr. Englander, myself, we are reserve officers for the LAPD, which is why we are pleased to honor the Reserve Officer and Community Volunteers of the Year from every command of this city. And I believe this is the first time we have held such a presentation honoring our reserve program here in City Council chambers. So, I want to recognize each and every one of you for your service. For many years, I partnered along our reserve officers as a senior lead officer during a number of task force, crime reduction task forces, as well as curfew task forces and such. It was one of my favorite times as a police officer, working with our reserves, and even more so now, as a City Council member and as a reserve. I appreciate, we appreciate all your service and what you do to our entire city, and most importantly, our Police Department, especially at a time where we need our reserve officers at the most, where we've seen upticks in crime throughout the City of Los Angeles, and now is a time that we need each and every one of you. Want to thank also Carla Amison for her commitment to the foundation each and every year. Let's give Carla and the entire Board of Directors a round of applause for the Police Reserve Foundation, day in and day out, advocating for our reserves, working with alongside the Police Department. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Englander for a few words. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. They say to be a reserve, our motto is to be twice the citizen. You think about the men and women standing up here. Think about this for a moment. They put on, they don the same gun, the same badge, the same uniform, they work the same details. They've gone through the same training as a full-time officer. They go out on patrol. They put their life on the front line. We've actually lost reserve officers in the line of duty. They work every detail throughout the City of Los Angeles, in an airship, mounted unit, we have motors, vice, gangs, narcotics, robbery homicide, investigators, all the way through the department. Reserves are a core fabric intertwined with our full-time officers each and every day, working the front line to protect us. But there's a difference. There's a distinct difference between the heroes here and our full-time officers. They do it for free. They put their lives on the front line for free. Many, in fact, of my classmates over a decade ago are standing right here with me and are here today. And we have become family. We're not just friends. We celebrate each other's birthdays, our kids have grown up together, we vacation together. They've become family. And I am so grateful that I've had this opportunity, not only to be a reserve officer and go out and work patrol with them, in fact, one of the reserve officers who I work regularly with is a pastor at a church. Imagine, a politician and a pastor in uniform, patrolling their own community. You get pulled over by them, and you feel that you've seen God. Because the first thing they say is, holy something. Now, we were actually working patrol a few months ago together one night. And think about this. While we're out there working, we have spouses at home that are waiting up all night long as well. Scared, frightened, praying that we make it home safely and that we're out there. And we've gotten to some serious incidents. I'll leave it at that. But a few months ago, I was out there with my partner, and we're working, and right at the end of watch, we had a citizen flag down. We had somebody asking for help as we were driving by, so we stopped to render aid. And it turned out this transient got into a, an issue, and my partner went down, ended up transporting to a hospital. We were there together all night. He's had four surgeries since then. He's finally recovered and going through rehabilitation and back at work as a youth minister, and back in patrol. He actually is back now, working in a black and white, and got cleared for duty. That's commitment. And I can tell you, a lot of the men and women standing here with us today have gone through that same thing. And so, I want to say thank you. Thank you for being friends. Thank you for putting your life on the front line to protect all of us. Thank you for the partnership, the commitment. Thank you for being twice the citizen. And thank you to my partner in crime, Joe Buscaino, for putting this together as well. I really appreciate your dedicated commitment to both public safety and public service. Thank you. Thank you, Mitchell. Thanks. Thank you very much, Mr. Englander. You know, Mitch and I heard over the course of the last few years that some of the reserve officers had some concerns that the Police Department needed to step up and be more committed to our reserve officer corps. And sure enough, Chief Beck listened and assigned a unit overseen, well, I know we've had a unit, reserve officer unit for many years, but we've seen an elevated commitment, a renewed commitment to the reserve officer program through Chief Beck's leadership and Lieutenant Davenport, who is the officer in charge of the reserve officer unit. Help me welcome Lieutenant Davenport, who will present the Reserve Officer of the Year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Los Angeles City Council and the command officers of the Los Angeles Police Department, and their family and friends that are here to support these reserve officers. You know, these reserve officers do an important job in this city. They save this city $4 million a year. Can you think of a city or any community that didn't have volunteers? How sad it would be. They provide the services that no one else would provide. They are very important, and I would like, from this year forward, that every year that reserve officers in this month, which is Volunteer Appreciation Month, are acknowledged by the City Council. They make a difference. We have to mind the things that really matter, and these are the folks that really matter in terms of making the city safer and more of a livable city for all the people that visit here, that live here, and play here. There are a few reserves that I must acknowledge. The Reserve Officer of the Year from Operations West Bureau is Reserve Officer Bernard Cannelli. Operations South Bureau, Reserve Officer Mike Seitz. Reserve Officer Robert Torres from Operations Central Bureau. Reserve Officer Richard Bagger from Operations Valley Bureau. And Reserve Officer Michael Hagan from Specialized Division. I just want to-
Just give them a round of applause.
I would ask, and I want to repeat this, is that every year, we need to acknowledge these people, because what they do really matters in keeping this city safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Help me welcome the President of the Los Angeles Police Reserve Foundation, Carla Amison. And Michael Sellers. Michael, come on up. Co-Presidents.
Thank you for having us, and thank you for this wonderful honor that all of our reserves are receiving, for the acknowledgement of the service that they provide. We would like to increase recruitment of reserve officers. If we had our full contingent, we would augment the city by about $20 million. So let's look at how we can all help to recruit more officers. It's a difficult process. About 1 in 100 make it through, so you can see why we need to have a very, very large applicant pool. Take a quick look at our new video that we have for recruitment starring Mr. Shaquille O'Neal. Michael?
I just want to second everything that Carla said. And I also want to thank the Reserve Section, Lieutenant Darnell Davenport doing just a fantastic job. Thank you very much for honoring us here tonight.
Just a quick note, if nobody mentions it, but Officer Kalili also received the French Police Medal of Valor at our banquet last Saturday night.
All right. And to land this presentation, Mr. President, I'll turn it back over to Mitch. So, and I wanted to mention Officer Kalili for one second about that distinguished, this is, this is really cool. That Medal of Valor, that recognition from the French police. No officer in the United States, reserve or otherwise, have ever received one of those distinguished medals. And so, that really stands out, and in fact, in fact, Bernard, come on up here. I actually had the pleasure of, on going on a trip, an exchange, police exchange program a number of years ago with Bernard Kalili, and, of which, by the way, we paid our own way, no taxpayer funds, but anyway, just a full disclosure, footnote, done. So with that, I learned while we were on this trip about our challenge coins from World War II. And what they do is, there was, there was a, there was a pilot that was shot down, and when he was captured, he was beaten so badly, they couldn't recognize him, he became a prisoner of war. And what he had done before he went up in flight is he had these challenge coins made for everybody, and they wore them around his neck. And when they put them around his neck, everybody had them in a leather pouch, and that was all he had left. They beat him so badly, that was all he had left, and they didn't take it from him. When he, when he was actually able to free himself and was captured, they put him in a firing line, they were gonna shoot him, unless he could explain who he was, but he couldn't talk because he had a broken jaw. So he ripped the challenge coin off of his neck, and he presented it, and they said, "Oh, you're a friendly, you're one of us," and it spared his life. The Reserve Corps actually started out of World War II. And so I think it's fitting that we're gonna present every one of them here today with one of our challenge coins as well, as a token of appreciation to say thank you very much and be safe. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
So, thank you all. Thank you again. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you so very much for your service. As they are exiting, I'd like to recognize Marquis Harris Dawson for our next presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and members. As I'm joined by honorees, come on up. You gotta get in the picture so you can be on television. Everybody can see you. Everybody, April is African-American Women's Fitness Month. And so I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight the importance of affordable, quality programs for fitness and fitness education, and the people who help make those available in our community. Today, standing with me is Shawna Robinson of Total Women's Gym and Spa. And today, we're celebrating two victories. First, her success as an entrepreneur, and second, the way she became an entrepreneur and a women's leader in the movement for physical health among African-American women. She's joined today by her husband and the Community Outreach Director for Baldwin Hills Mall, Jason Lombard. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Shawna has a great story that we're very, very proud of, as a, after a few stints working in politics and in screenwriting, she decided she needed a stable, less stressful source of income, so she went to go be a sales representative for Total Woman. She excelled there, helping women achieve their fitness goals, and was promoted several times in a short, a short amount of time working there. She climbed the corporate ladder, and during that time, realized her own entrepreneurial acumen. It was during a 14-week course for potential business owners that she wrote a business plan for a teenage after-school program based on Total Women's Membership Model as a practice, shortly after the corporation began franchising. She worked with the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza and the corporation to create a sustainable and profitable partnership. The corporation needed someone that could help move that forward in the Baldwin Hills neighborhood, and so they chose Shawna to help make that happen. Today, at the mall there, Total Women's, Total Women's Fitness is open. It's got a female staff and all-female membership there. You can go to the gym from, I think, 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. And there's also a spa, so you can get a facial members, well, you can, you can let women in your families know that you can get a facial and a massage as you're getting your workout there. This is very, very important, and we wanted to highlight African-American Women's Fitness Month because the obesity epidemic in the United States affects everybody, but there is no single group that it affects more than African-American women. And we know that obesity and the diseases that come with it are completely controllable through diet and exercise. And so, again, while everybody needs to get healthy, and I think we can all, including me, have more fitness and lose a few pounds, we wanted today to call special attention to fitness for African-American women, and special, special recognition to Shawna Robinson's and Total Women's Gym and Spa in the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Mall.
Yes, sir. So kind of you. Yes, definitely. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your time. One of the most interesting things is when I was writing the business plan for Total Woman in Baldwin Hills- Woman in Baldwin Hills Plaza, I literally thought it was a typo that there were no gyms in the area, not one. There's no spas, there's no resources. So we're just so grateful to be able to provide about 1,000 members as of now, a resource for health, wellness, fitness, and stress relief. We're open seven days a week from 6:00 a.m. until 9:00. Please tell your family and friends. I also wanted to thank my husband and Jason. Hi, thank you. And also Capri Capital, Baldwin Hills Plaza, and Total Woman Corporate for making all of this happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and its Council, we want to present this commendation to you. Something nice to put up in the gym.
Oh, my goodness. Get a workout with this.
For everybody can see.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Okay, as we prepare for our final presentation, I want to call up a couple of items. I want to call up items, let's do Items 3 and 5. Mr. Zuma Dog, Items 3 and 5. Please come forward. Sergeants, let him approach the podium. Items 3 and 5.
Boy, these agendas are like gold. Nobody wanted to give me one. Okay, now listen, this is very important, and by the way, I'd like to say my name's Zuma Dog, and my new thing in my second decade here, not critic, advisory, trying to provide some thoughts and insights that maybe you don't have time to focus on. Now, to let the public know, this is for gang reduction. They're going to close the streets, certain streets, for gang violence. It will reduce, you know, close these streets, the gangs are too much on these streets. So I just want the people to know that what we're dealing with now is that the City of Los Angeles actually has to close streets due to the crime on them. And that's item number 5. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
No, I appreciate that. So I just want to say, people, that after everything City Council's done and the policy, and I am staying on topic of the specific concern these days, is the national DC policy with Obama with open borders and shipping in a lot of bad people from all over the world with the lowest skills and no income, and so now we have to close streets? Okay, that's serious, baby. I don't know what we do about it, but I wanted that to be known for the record, that we're living in a city now where streets are being closed just to get rid of the gang members. And meanwhile, that's not going to help, they're just going to go to the other streets. Let me read this thing. What else is on here? Let me talk, wait, what else is on here? This is pretty bad. Oh, this is terrible. Okay, this city, I don't know what you're going to do. We got a homeless crisis. I don't know if you saw in the L.A. Times yesterday, I'll be talking about that.
But you got to get on topic, man.
Okay, thank you very much. Number 3, I'm just combining them. Okay, since 3, this is public convenience, okay, this is to let somewhere else sell more alcohol, and it is in the, it says no impact, no impact on law enforcement. Well, if you talk to the district, to the police chief there over in the Hollywood area, they'll say that alcohol definitely has an impact on the law enforcement. It's called after 2:00 a.m., everybody's drunk, and it's a nightmare. So I'd like to caution City Council, we have a lot of alcohol there in the district already. And I would like to say, don't approve any more alcohol right now. You know, marijuana, let's go more for collective. Turn that into a collective, let everybody smoke some weed. Everybody knows that marijuana is not as dangerous to drive on as alcohol. And in an abundance of generosity, I'm going to yield the rest a minute and 30? Unprecedented. I'm losing it.
Let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Englander, would you, are you ready for your presentation? Okay, then the floor is yours.
Today's a special day. As we do this every year, it's very special nevertheless, and very needed. LAFD, the MDA, today is their day. Today, I'm proud to join the Los Angeles Fire Department, the United Firefighters, Local 112, and the International Association of Firefighters to kick off the 62nd Annual Fill the Boot. This is all to benefit Muscular Dystrophy Association. We are proclaiming Tuesday, April 26 through April 28, as our Fill the Boot Days throughout the City of Los Angeles. Since 1954, the International Association of Firefighters began the Fill the Boot Partnership with MDA, which includes firefighters throughout America, collecting funding to support efforts to combat neuromuscular disease. Together, the firefighters across the nation have raised over $585 million. Over the past 10 years, the Los Angeles Fire Department and UFLAC have raised more than $1.4 million for MDA through the annual Fill the Boot campaign. Let's give them a round of applause. The Muscular Dystrophy Association is the world's leading nonprofit health agency dedicated to finding treatments and cures for muscular dystrophy and other neuromuscular diseases. And I want to personally thank the men and women of the Los Angeles Fire Department for donating their time, their effort, their treasures, to fund this important cause. And to show everyone what an important program this really is, we actually have a quick video we'd like to show you as well.
We're out here today to fill the boot, to raise money for muscular dystrophy.
It's making a difference in people's lives, and we sense that, we feel it, we get to see it.
The firefighters are nice because they always do this thing called Fill the Boot. And they go out on the street, and they ask people, "Hey, want to give us some money? Dollar, dime, penny?" Sometimes they even have a little competition to see what fire station made the best possible money for MDA.
It's extremely exciting for us. We're happy to do it, we're proud to do it, and we love doing it.
It's a commitment that the fire service and the firefighters have made to MDA. We're out there to hit the streets and do all that we can to raise money for this great
If that video isn't touching, I tell you what is. You see not just the firefighters actually standing on the corners and front of their stations, walking door to door, standing in front of supermarkets, holding a boot. These are the boots on the ground that are putting their lives on the front line to protect us. Now they're taking their time out of their lives to protect those most vulnerable in society, to send them off to camp, to give them a sense of purpose, to give them an opportunity, to give them a life, to give them lasting memories. It's extraordinary that our heroes are truly, I'll call twice the heroes, for doing this campaign. And with that, I'd like to ask Adam, no stranger to us, from UFLAC, to, for once, put the camera down and step up to the mic and share a few words as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to start thanking Councilmember Mitch Englander for his support in this cause. This is something that the Fire Department has been doing for the last 11 years in partnership with MDA. It has been going on for over 60 years through our International Association of Firefighters. But this, we've really taken an active role in getting out there and filling the boot. Last year, we raised over $160,000. And a lot of people want to know what that money goes to, and we actually had a couple of kids that came by my fire station. We were able to, they came by in their wheelchairs with their mom. We were able to give them a demonstration of the fire engine, what it does. We gave them a little ride on there, and, you know, their mom and their parents were telling us that was, you know, one of the best days of their life, you know, so something that they'll never forget. So these kids, every year, they have the opportunity to go to an adventure camp. And one of the kids, he says, "Where else would I have the opportunity to go to an adventure camp? A kid like me, where would I have the opportunity?" So that's where some of this money goes. There's also research has been done, just in the last six months even, new drugs are being developed that some of these kids might one day be walking, and they have the new medications are out there. It costs a lot of money. Look at that. Thank you very much.
How about a round of applause? That was not planned. I'm going to start passing the boot around, Council Chairman.
So many people wonder what we're doing out there, but when you see, we also create a video ourselves as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Buscagno, Councilman Bonin. All right, we're starting off well. Very good cause. So not only do the kids be able to go to camp, but there's also, they help the local families with many of their different needs that they have. Okay, we're off to a great start.
So we did this here today, but we will also, we will be out April 26, 27, and 28.
We have 28 locations throughout the city, so every battalion in the city. If you go to uflac.org, you can go to our website, where you can see where all those locations are. There's a PDF, you can click on there. You also can watch the video that we've created. We have a great partnership with LAFD, with our Fire Chief, Ralph Trazz, is also on board, helping to support this cause with us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That was great. By the way, we've just started a new tradition. So watch the calendar, the Council Presentation Calendar, before you start coming next year, because some of you I know only showed up with, you know, hundreds and 50s. So with that, and we'll take it all, I'd like to bring up Emily Harvey, representing the Muscular Dystrophy Association, to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for having us today. I would just like to expand a little on what Adam said. In 2016, we have four different drugs that are up for approval from the FDA, so it's a very exciting time. And in the next five to 10 years, we have more drugs coming out than we have in the past 50. So all of the drugs are, you know, incredibly helpful for these family members, and just in our office alone, we've seen kids that were unable to walk. After six weeks on the drug, they were able to walk 20 feet. And I just, the other day, I saw a video of one of them running around the street. So it was pretty incredible and amazing to see. And also, it just brings it back to why we do what we do, and why it's so important for our firefighters to stand out and fill the boot for us. So thank you again, and please stop by April 26, 27, and 28.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. In addition to that, the firefighters do an annual calendar, so you can pick one of those up as well. I think Adam is, what, Mr. July this year?
August.
August. And so thanks for everything that you guys do. I also want to give a shout out to Jimmy Blackman. Jimmy is here, and while he does so much, and he's no stranger to these chambers, so much for the Fire Department, he is always there with UFLAC as well, making sure that they are so engaged in the community, and he does such a great job, so I want to recognize him as well. So on behalf of all of us, thank you to the Los Angeles Fire Department for filling the
Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you. I have a, we're done with the presentation?
No, you, we're waiting on you.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to reconsider Adam 14 from Friday's Special Agenda. Council File 15-1041-S, as in SAM 1, relative to a reserve fund loan to the consolidated plan grant funds.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Very good. I'd like to defer to Mr. Sadio, who has a substitute motion to consider.
We have a substitute motion that just reconciles the options taken in terms of funding for the program.
Oh, it's getting circulated right now.
Okay, so first, we're going to vote on the substitution, then we'll actually vote on the issue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Excuse me, I asked to speak on this item. I don't know what we're voting on.
In fact, that's my mistake. All right, so let's do-
What are we substituting?
Let's ask that this be reconsidered. Let's open the roll. No, I thought I already, so we just voted on reconsideration. So we will have the conversation on this. I did not look at my monitor, so that was my mistake. Okay, so we start. Mr. Buscagno, did you have anything else? Are you done?
That's it.
Then I want to defer to Mr. Wezar.
I just, as other colleagues on this side of the horseshoe are wondering, what are we voting on? We're not familiar with the substance of this.
Okay, then we'll deal with this later in today. If that, is that it, being substituted, or?
Because an item-
So I'll call, we'll call that back up later today. So let's move to Item 28. Mr. Walsh, Item 28. Mr. Kretz.
While we're meeting for Mr. Walsh to get to the podium, I wonder if we could reconsider Item 1A and make that an item on our Special Agenda.
Okay, listen, here's Mr. Walsh first.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. This concerns supporting a bill that establishes new safety standards for natural gas storage. Yeah, a little late, isn't it? But I want to tell you, that neighborhood was all white. And upper-middle-class white people believed in the system. It wasn't until their little children started hemorrhaging from the nose that they decided to crack down and go out in the street and do the black thing. The black thing is demonstrated. And if this storage well had been in a black neighborhood, the blacks would have been out the next day. But it took the whites weeks and weeks, and watching their children being poisoned to death, before they got their white asses out in the street.
Mr. Englander.
President, I stand and ask you for your support. To establish new safety standard valves and safety systems and safety checks on an unregulated self-policed industry is absolutely insane not to have that. The fact that they have voluntary inspections on these walls, the fact that we've had over 20,000 people flee their homes, evacuated, two schools shut down, over 2,000 kids displaced. To this day, those schools are still shut down. We had to shut down a city park. We have had an ongoing issue, not just with SoCal gas, but their negligence in maintaining their infrastructure, following what should be standard protocols, or having an emergency process in place to protect the local residents that have been highly impacted. I'm asking you to support this legislation that I work closely with Senator Pavillon and so many, that we have safety standards, what should have been done decades ago to protect those who live near these facilities. Now- Now, people argue that we shouldn't build homes near these facilities. This has been a five-mile plume, a five-mile radius, that has spread through areas beyond Porter Ranch, through Chatsworth and Northridge and Granada Hills. And depending on where the wind would shift, we had complaints all over the San Fernando Valley. We have vulnerable facilities throughout the city, throughout the county, and throughout the region. We dramatically, desperately, urgently need additional legislation, updated technologies, and standards in place and protocols that we don't have. I'd further go on to say that the one regulatory agency that has the oversight, DOGger, that has the oversight in anything underground that has to do with these storage facilities, DOGger is an agency with a tail and no teeth. They don't have the ability to go out and actually do the true regulation that they should be doing. And so we need to strengthen their ability, we need to give them the opportunity and the oversight, and we need to go far beyond this bill to protect those in all of our communities, or we'll continue to see these disasters occur. So I ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander, on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move on to item 35. Do we have Mr. Corretts? I'm gonna take, give me a couple minutes, and I'll take care of your, your 1A or whatever it was. So let's just bring in, let's go to item 35, Antonio Ramirez. But no, I have not forgotten you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you very much, number 35. Jose Wezar and Paul Krikorian's motion on recognizing the Fiesta Broadway as a special event is, again, deceptive and dishonest by these councilmembers. They didn't tell you that Broadway is ugly, filthy, unsafe, and a maze of nook and crannies for the junkies, wetbacks, and chungo latino gangbangers, pussies, and pigs, and thieves, and losers. That's not the only problem you'll be faced with, but you'll have to watch where you step in. A puddle of urine, or a mound of feces, or syringes, or cracked cement, and sidewalks, eventually taking a fall. But sadly, you will be too busy holding the tight, holding on tight to your purses, bags, and kids, and watching over the filth and uneven pavement, and having to put up with your stench, so you won't have time to see or enjoy the event. The city councilmembers need money, quick, to put and replace money for the general funds. So by the way, will they have bathrooms available there? And again, ladies and gentlemen, we need to make sure that they clean up Broadway, because truly, it is unsafe. There are, there are assaults happening all the time, every moment. You've got terrible monopolies of gang, chungo latino gangbangers and wetbacks crawling all over the place, and robbing and snatching purses and bags from a lot of senior citizens, and a lot of people who are just walking and taking a leisurely day. I do not recommend downtown Broadway, truly. That's deceptive. That is the worst place to have an event. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves, really. Again, it is ugly. Broadway is ugly, unsafe, and the stench is atrocious. Again, that's not a place for a child, it's not a place for a human being. Walk down there, you'll see nothing but rodents and possums running across the street night and day. So again, God bless Donald Trump and Jefe, who will restore America and the United States military. And again, let us vote for Donald Trump to restore America.
No, you're off subject. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, your item was, was it 1A? Let's vote on reconsideration of item 1A. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay.
And I'd like to just call it special and add it to the agenda.
Okay, I think I have a few cards. We're trying to retrieve those, and so I have Ms. McAllister, Mr. Previn, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Dog. 1A?
Okay, 1, yes. I'd like to speak on 1. I, I'm going to post this online, and any, I have followers, and they ask me when I'm coming back. I'm back. Okay, I, I, you stopped listing the liens. We used to have the liens listed under number 1. You stopped doing that. We need to know who's being swindled out of their homes. That's exactly what's going on. And I want that 250% reduced to 20%. We shouldn't be fining homeowners 250%. The fees are larger than the violation cost. And also, the homeowners need to know that they can get $5,000 under the Handy Worker Program to hex, to help fix those violations on their houses. It's called the Handy Worker Program. Now, I think this city council is using that money as petty cash. You're pocketing that money. Now, I'm African-American, I'm black. My great-great-grandparents were in slavery. If you go down to Skid Row, which is walking distance from here, that's where my people are. And I want my people off of Skid Row. Okay? And I want Skid Row bombed after we get my people into affordable housing and get these illegal aliens out of the affordable housing. Now, we got 500 city attorneys in this city.
Stay on the subject. And no yelling, because it adversely affects the trans letter.
When you cut off the mic, you forced me to speak louder.
No, you're off the subject. Get back on the subject.
Okay, the subject is item number 1. I want that 250% reduced to 20%. That is usury, that is abusing the people of this city. We should be trying to keep people in housing, not get them on the street. And I blame this council for such actions. And I blame this council for not listing the liens that we have on these houses. We've been doing it since I've been coming here, but all of a sudden, since I put a lot of pressure on you guys, you took the housing, these houses off the agenda. We want to know whose houses are being threatened, so that we can help them. We can get them in here and try to get some of that $5,000. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Previn, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Zuma Dog. Did I hear Mr. Walsh pass? Mr. Previn?
Yes, it is Eric Previn from CD2, sir. Mr. Corretts continued this item earlier in the meeting, so that is a perplexing detail. Was there an arrangement that was?
Just speak to the item, speak your concerns, Mr. Previn.
I'm following along closely, and that's what happened. But did they make a, is there a new bit of information, or it's all as-is? Because there's very little information about this. It's a, it's in, on North Marietta, in my district, CD2. It's a lien for $3,927. Councilmember Corretts said, hey, I'd like to continue that. And then it was continued to May 3rd, but now we're moving it through, and there's been a change? I don't know. I, I don't, I'm not going to speak for very long on it, because it's impossible to make comments on items which are done over on the side. If we have a little conversation, as you like to say, does anybody share the result? Or we're just gonna lien the guy, or settle the guy's lien, or whatever? I mean, Mr. O'Farrell was here last week, many have been here before, and people are, well, I'm done. That's 60 seconds.
Okay, Mr. Dog.
Yes, Zuma Dog, in my advisatory concierge role, I'd like to advise you, vote no on this. Do not put this on to lien. Now, let me briefly explain to those who weren't here Friday. Building and Safety Department is under the FBI investigation, interviewing people burnt by these programs and the people who works in the departments. We know the FBI has busted people for taking bribes in the window. Now, here's how it works, systematic code and enforcement. It sounds nice, but what they do, it's like the mafia. They walk up, they go, hey, your fences are a quarter inch too high, your hedges are a quarter inch too low, you know, why don't you repaint this? They come up with all kinds of crazy shit that they make you have to do, and usually the banks won't even allow it, approve the loans. So then you get into lien, and the mistakes are passed down the line. Even once you comply, the city, it's so racketeering that they don't take, it doesn't matter, they don't care. So I'm gonna save my minute for the next item, so vote no, more of this, zumadog.com.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Fuentes, why don't we deal with your item now? I believe that was 32, item 32. And we'll start off with you as chair.
Very good. Thank you, Council President Wesson. Colleagues, thank you for your attention on this very, very important item. I would ask our guests to come to the center table as I make my comments here to figure out how to move this along quickly, if we can. We're joined today by representatives, obviously, of our great Department of Water and Power, and our ratepayer advocate, Dr. Pickle. But with them today is Tom Doughty from the California Integrated System Operator, Robert Oglesby from this California Energy Commission, and Edward Randolph from the California Public Utilities Commission, Randolph. And they're here today, colleagues, to speak to a motion that I waved out of my committee that deals directly with the consequences of the disaster that's taken place at Aliso Canyon. I don't think that we have to recite all of the issues that are going on over there right now, but there is some serious implications to the system as it relates to our utility. And I would argue that it is a matter of statewide concern, and I'll let these professionals tell you why. But colleagues, the Department of Water and Power, in collaboration with these state agencies, came together recently to devise a reliability action plan earlier this month. And they're here with us today to share with us their findings. Specifically, some of the highlights that came out of the plan are that there is a real, real likelihood that, if not mitigated, we could have up to 14 days of blackouts in the city of Los Angeles, and maybe even in other parts of the grid. These blackouts, colleagues, as you know, are not just an inconvenience, sort of like when we've got strong winds in our community. Those are temporary, because the department is so good in restoring power. These would be load shedding, curtailment efforts consciously made because of the lack of supply in fuels. And that has tremendous economic consequences if they're not mitigated. So what I'd like to do is have everybody sort of introduce themselves, if at all possible, tell us a little bit about the area of the plan that you're addressing. And I just wanted to sort of also preface this with, this isn't a presentation on an opinion one way or the other of what ought to happen with Aliso Canyon. It is, though, a, I think, very important summary of what is going to happen if we don't mitigate the situation there today. It's not just a storage field of natural gas for the Department of Water and Power. It is a vital component to the energy generation and supply for the state of California. So with that, Marcy, if you wouldn't mind, sort of kicking us off with our esteemed guests.
Thank you, sir. This morning, I'm going to speak briefly to the potential impacts that reduced natural gas storage capability may have on electric system reliability. All the detailed draft reports on this topic have been previously delivered to your offices, and we've provided a briefing to council staff as well. Also, the California Energy Commission held a public hearing in Woodland Hills on the draft report Friday before last. Our planned remarks will be brief in order that we can get to questions that you may have. I wanted to touch on quickly, there's a significant amount of coordination that is going on, and I think there's some blurring between the roles and responsibilities. You'll notice on the slides, these are the major groups that are involved. You heard from Councilmember Englander that, that the Department of Gas and Geothermal Resources, also known as DOGger, is the regulatory agency that oversees drilling operation, maintenance, and plugging and abandonment of oil and natural gas and geothermal wells. They're also the agency that is overseeing the safety review of Aliso Canyon. DOGger is not represented here today, because we're here to talk about electric reliability impacts. We have a representative from the California Public Utility Authority. The PUC is the regulator over privately-owned electric, natural gas, telecom, water, railroad, rail transit, passenger transportation companies. And representing the PUC is their Energy Division Director, Mr. Ed Randolph. Also in attendance is the California Energy Commission. The CEC is the state's primary energy policy and planning agency, and they are represented by their Executive Director, Mr. Rob Oglesby. Next is the California Independent System Operator, also called the CAISO. The CAISO is charged with operating electric generation and transmission resources to ensure the electric system under their jurisdiction remains reliable and doesn't impact other utilities in the western region of the United States. That function is referred to as being a balancing authority. And the CAISO is represented by Mr. Tom Doughty, Vice President of Customer and State Affairs. And finally, your DWP. Like the CAISO, DWP is also a balancing authority in California, and we are charged with operating our system in a way that maintains electric reliability. And I have both Mike Webster offsite here, and myself. The, and we also, as you know, have Fred Pickle, who's the Office of Public Accountability Ratepayer Advocates Office. With that, I'm gonna turn the next few slides over to Mr. Oglesby from the California Energy Commission.
Thank you, councilmembers. Mr. President, Rob Oglesby for the Energy Commission. First, just a couple of words on what's going on on the site now. You've already had an item earlier today that I listened to about the role of DOGger in assuring the safety of the well system that's on Aliso Canyon. There's an evaluation going underway. The wells need to be subject to a battery of tests, six in all. They're in progress. We don't have an idea of how, when that'll be completed. But in that regard, it is clear that the rules have been changed on the operation of the wells, so when we look at reliability going forward, if Aliso is put back in service, it will surely be operated differently than it had been prior to the incident. Let's go to the next slide. So what we're here today primarily is to review our study, the agency CPUC, Energy Commission, CalISO, and LEDWP, with others, work cooperatively to develop an outlook on summer reliability. I want to emphasize, emphasize that this report is only about summer reliability, it's not a pronouncement about the future of Aliso Canyon, it's not about, it was not intended to go into the scope of the ultimate future of natural gas in our system. It was really to look at the first step, the challenges that we face now with the loss of the flexibility that we had with Aliso Canyon being in place. We're gonna look forward and have another workshop in the Los Angeles area coming the summer, the look at winter going forward. And we've also been assigned to do a study on the longer-term outlook for storage facilities, and indeed, natural gas going forward in our system, but those are out in the future. We have published this, the draft report that we're gonna summarize to you today. We're receiving comments, and welcome comments. The comment period ends on April 22nd. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. President, councilors, thanks for having us here today. I'm Tom Doughty with the California Independent System Operator. I want to share three things with you. One, the magnitude of Aliso Canyon's impact on the electric supply system. Two, the function that Aliso Canyon provides to help us maintain balance in the electric grid. And three, the risks to electric reliability should Aliso Canyon not be available this summer. So let's check these off. First, in magnitude, Aliso Canyon is the largest storage facility in the region, and from electric generation standpoint, it has a very far reach. As you can see on the graphic here today, about 17 major power plants in the Southland are served, in part, by Aliso Canyon. On order of magnitude, these power plants represent almost 10,000 megawatts of power generating capacity. About 60% of those are administered by the California ISO, and about 40% are run by your DWP. Aliso has a function that is very important to us in operating the grid, in that it is a shock absorber, a cushion, a way to keep the, the gas flowing to electric generators when the pipelines themselves are not able to do it. Well, what are the circumstances that make that happen? A large ramp in energy consumption, when we have to fire up those local units. Or a peak day, when everything's, all the power generation we have in the basin is running at full capacity, and suddenly we have a contingency. Something has fallen offline, and we quickly need to back up that unit. Aliso Canyon provides gas to help us make those adjustments. The risk to reliability, if we can click to the next slide, please. The risk to reliability falls into three general areas. Number one, if gas flowing on the Southern California Gas Pipeline System is not scheduled properly, in other words, forecasts might have been missed, or gas pipeline users have not put enough capacity on that system, we could begin to run short. And our analysis took into account four real-world days, four actual days we're studied. We looked at two things, the capacity of the system to deliver the gas, and the dynamic capability of the system to deliver it fast enough. You can imagine when large gas-fired power generators are turned on, the amount of gas that flows to them is substantial. So we'd need both the capacity of the piping system and the dynamic capability to flow the gas quickly. The gas system- The gas system itself, item two on this graphic, is also a very important factor. If gas system outages arise, either planned or unplanned, they can have a significant effect on how much gas can flow to electric generators. And then three, I mentioned this concept of dynamic flow. We frequently need to ramp these plants up and down to maintain balance on the grid. We need to have that gas available to handle those ramps when we're managing contingencies that pop up, as I mentioned, power plants that come off. When we're following changes in renewable generation, we have it frequently in the Los Angeles area, monsonal cloud flow comes over. It knocks off our utility-grade solar, and it knocks off our rooftop solar. Suddenly, we need to turn to these gas units to back us up. Something important to note, the last bullet on the graphic, gas moves at about 30 miles an hour. Electricity moves at 186,000 miles a second. It takes a long time to move gas from the border of California when it's coming in into the Southland. So we can't call on the pipeline for that fast, dynamic ramping that we need. And then the final graphic. So the confirmation of this circumstance is here. Our analyses show the most sobering numbers is that 16 days this summer, we're likely to have gas curtailments. In other words, SoCalGas won't have enough gas to keep its system operating. We'll have to curtail some gas consumption. Well, power plants are the first to be curtailed. Now, it's important to know, not every gas curtailment event is automatically a blackout, not automatically an interruption in electric service. But our studies show that 14 of those 16 days pose, or the gas supplies pose, a significant risk to electric service. And that risk is not just significant in the number of possible interruptions, but in their size. Several million people could be affected by outages of this nature. This is a very, very serious matter. As Councilman Fuentes said, a life and safety matter. So our situation now is time for action, and we're going to shift to Mr. Randolph here in just a minute and talk about what we're doing to mitigate this risk. General Manager Edwards will come in and talk about what DWP is doing. But I want to leave you with this, that this is an unparalleled circumstance in our history. We've never seen this level of risk. Remember when the Santa Nofera Nuclear Generating Station went offline, that was 2,200 megawatts? We have almost 10,000 megawatts at risk in this particular scenario. Ed?
Thank you, Tom. I'm Ed Randolph. I'm the Director of the Energy Division at the California Public Utilities Commission. The action plan, after it looked at the analysis, then starts making proposals on a number of mitigation measures that can be followed to help reduce this risk. Note from the start, this is a, will be an ever-growing list. From the public meeting we had two weeks ago, a number of items were proposed there. As a matter of fact, one of those we've already pursued, which will likely lead to an additional 50 megawatts of storage in the LA basin online this summer that otherwise would have come online, future down the line. But the mitigation measures, I'm not going to get into any great detail and leave that for questions if you want. It's important to note that out of those, out of the 18 we've listed, 16 of those have nothing to do with Aliso Canyon whatsoever. They're focused on changes to the gas system rules and how the gas system's operated and how non-core customers participate with that, changes to operational coordination within the gas system so that the pipeline system itself can function more efficiently without Aliso. And then finally, a number of proposals on reducing both electric and gas demand in the LA region, in the Southland region this summer. With that, I'll leave it to that list and questions, and I know on the operational coordination that Ms. Edwards has more comments.
Thank you, Ed. Specific to DWP, there are a variety of actions that we will be taking to help mitigate the impacts, but I would remind you of the sense of scale. This gas issue where it can impact 10,000 megawatts is really something that's unprecedented, and so many of the mitigation measures we have may in fact be insufficient to be able to completely insulate us under all circumstances. It bears repeating, though, that LA, through this body and the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, is putting $178 million into energy efficiency reductions this year alone as an attempt to try to lessen the dependence. The, we hope to bring on another 560 megawatts of solar energy by the end of the year, the beginning of next. Again, we have the operational reality that Mr. Doughty outlined, which is, it just takes a cloud cover for DWP to suddenly be dependent on the gas plants, and so we need to bear that in mind. Next slide, please. Oh, and before I forget, there's also an unprecedented communications effort that's being developed across multiple agencies. In part, it will resemble what some of you may recall from the energy crisis where we utilize Flex Alerts. We go out for, to ask customers in real time. We're not able to predict exactly the days and the conditions that these limitations might occur. All we did was take four days of history, overlay current circumstances, and then extrapolate what that might mean. It was also that analysis was conducted assuming that the power grid was fully operational, that it didn't have any outages or hadn't experienced contingencies. And so, as we're looking forward now, we've been advised all 114 Aliso Canyon wells will pass comprehensive tests or be isolated before any consideration would be given to re-injecting gas. But it's important to remember, these systems were designed with Aliso as critical infrastructure for integrated gas and electric operation. As stated, the draft analysis indicates there are risks to electric reliability during the upcoming summer. Mitigation measures will help, but they will not eliminate them. The potential impacts to electric reliability during the winter season, as was noted by Mr. Oglesby, have yet to be analyzed in detail. But this is really the start of an intensive communication campaign. Consumers will need to be made aware of the increased exposure. There, as I mentioned, there'll be some large-scale communication campaigns underway, but we will need people to conserve. And again, a reminder, this is not just an issue that is impacting the city of Los Angeles alone. Other counties, Riverside, Orange, San Diego, they all could be potentially impacted as well. With that, Dr. Pickle, did you have any observations you wanted to add?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I'm Fred Pickle, Executive Director, Office of Public Accountability Ratepayer Advocate. This is important, and it's serious. This is the first time I've seen a detailed, coordinated analysis of combined electric and gas emergency operations at the local level, and I've been in this business for 42 years. I've never seen the CPUCs, the California Energy Commissions, the California ISOs, and DWP's logos on one press release, let alone two. Remember, back in 2001, even a brief outage was enough to disrupt traffic in LA for a day as all the traffic signals in LA were blinking, let alone the consequences for life and safety equipment. To ultimately manage the risks, this combined effort needs to identify in probably several rounds and several levels, the physical risks and solutions, we're partway down that process, the financial and economic alignment of not just the interests of the parties here and in state, but also in the interstate level. So this requires interstate coordination, and we need to do this quickly. And finally, we need to identify new communication and coordination needs and rules, down to even things like tabletop emergency exercises before and after any event.
And with that, sir, we're prepared to take questions.
Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Fuentes and Bloomingfield for bringing this before us, and for all these organizations for coordinating in an unprecedented way. A few questions. First, I know it's a longer-term solution than just this summer, but have we looked into how quickly we could ramp up to large-scale energy storage in the future?
The answer is yes. And, you know, and quickly, we're looking at, there's already been a number of storage procurement programs in place out there for the investor-owned utilities, mainly Southern California Edison. And we're looking at accelerating those, so some of those storage projects that have already have contracts will come online sooner. And then we've now identified a number of projects that don't have contracts that have the potential to come online this summer and are working through mechanisms in which the utility could potentially procure those resources.
That was about the total of 18 megawatts?
Yes. And as far as our gas purchasing, do we purchase on a firm or non-firm contract basis?
Right now, we don't purchase any gas from Southern California Gas, but they are the sole franchisee of the transportation system. So we have contracts that are on par with utilities to utilize that transmission system, but all utilities are considered non-core customers as opposed to residential gas use, and so we are the first ones to experience curtailments.
Is there any way that gas could be procured on a more firm, committed basis to replace Aliso Canyon?
It's not so much the gas as it is the limitations of the transportation system. Since it was built to use Aliso Canyon as that shock absorber, the balance of the piping in the system is not large enough to handle the fluctuating demand between residents and the utility sector.
And do we feel we have any capacity to respond to this successfully by education and response, sort of what we've tried to educate the public in the past with Flex Your Power? But basically, if we're about to have a blackout, social media, TV, radio, let everybody know, set everything off, any chance that we could get through by aggressively utilizing that?
Councilman, glad you asked that question. The Flex Alert program, as it's branded, has been very successful over the last 15 years in getting consumers to contribute when energy supplies are short. In the Southland, we can count on that for between 500 and 750 megawatts. We've seen numbers today in the order of 10,000 megawatts. So it helps those parties on the television and by radio and by the broadcast today, thanks in advance for participating this summer, because this is going to be an all-hands-on-deck experience for us, and we're going to need to call on consumers to help reduce their consumption. And perhaps, through effective social media marketing and full media marketing, we can get even a higher level of participation and response from consumers.
So I remember, for instance, when we were facing the somewhat manufactured energy crisis, and I was in the state Capitol, we actually did shut down the Capitol itself for a day or two when we were at our worst spots, and I would think we could do that kind of messaging and get everybody to shut down to some degree and actually get a better response than what you're talking about.
We are going to get as many advanced plans in place to both incentivize as well as stimulate that response. The reason, however, we're going to continue to surface it is the impacts of this are so large. The other thing, it's important to note, is while Flex Alerts are good for 500 to 750 megawatts, you also, you also reach a point of exhaustion with the public. About the third day or fourth day that you hear Flex Alerts, the response drops off dramatically. But we are working at expanding programs of demand response where people get off the grid to the extent that they can.
So we even have Amber Alert now. We could even use that in desperation and make sure every single person gets notified that they need to stop now.
We'll look into that.
Councilmember, it's worth noting that we've ordered SoCalGas to set aside up to $15 million for this summer for these type of marketing efforts, and then are instructing them to coordinate with the city of LA, with LADWP, and with other local governments. So it's a coordinated campaign out there going forward.
Obviously, we have senior citizens and the seriously ill and others that could be dramatically impacted by this, so obviously, we have to get it right, and I thank you for all your efforts.
Thanks.
Mr. Englander.
So framing this is first and foremost, there's no vote before us. This is just informational purposes. Informational purposes to tell us that the regulatory authorities and the independent system operators are going to make a decision, have a choice, based on fear, uncertainty, and negligence. So these are the choices before us. This is what's mildly interesting. We can have up to 14 days of blackouts of no power, or we can risk putting facilities back online that are going to put the risk of hundreds of thousands of people's lives, their health and their property, of small and local businesses out of business once again, which is exactly what is probably going to happen. Or we can run these public service announcements saying, "Shut off your electricity," after we've had a blackout. I don't know how people watch those on television when there's no power. They should be starting those now, but they're being developed. Of course, we've had those in the can for years. They should be deployed now. The consequences, everything we do has a consequence. Sempra, the parent company of SoCalGas, their negligence in inspecting and maintaining eroding wells in what they call vintage systems, in systems that were falling apart, and not putting the money into the effort of maintaining their own infrastructure, a private company instead just recently paid out millions of dollars to their top CEOs for bonuses for making more money last year. That was their consequence. Ours is we've become dependent, dependent on this private operator and others who have failed to maintain their infrastructure, who have failed to communicate and have emergency plans in place to work with the public and the regulatory agencies, who have failed to be transparent. And so now, we don't have a choice before us because it's not a choice. It's not our choice. There's no choice before us. There's no vote in front of us. They're simply letting us know that on one hand, we're either going to have power failures because we've become so dependent with this umbilical cord to our lives, and/or on the other hand, turn the facilities back on that we know will fail, that we know with certainty are going to have problems, that we know we had a spill this last week from one of their private operators on site, that we know two weeks ago, we had another company adjacent to the facility who was actually spewing methane in a pipe buried behind a tree that only got caught because we had a plane flying overhead with infrared cameras. That's the risk. That's what we've become. Consequences. So for every action, there's a consequence. The consequence to us is that we have no authority, no decision, no discretion, no opportunity to weigh in, to vote on, to move forward, to protect the people who are most vulnerable, those are living near these facilities, both here in Playa and Santa Clarita, throughout the region, or face no electricity. Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Bloomingfield, and I think followed by Mr. Fuentes to close, but Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. I wanted to drill down on better understanding what you're actually telling us in terms of the blackouts, potential blackouts. One, you're saying, in one place it says 14 days of blackout, in another part of the report it says 23. I assume it's all about probability. Nobody can know exactly. But what, what is the probability of having at least one blackout? Is that almost a certainty versus, I know, it's hard to quantify these things, it's obviously less probable as we move forward, but you're suggesting potentially 14? Are you coming to us to saying, hey, we're going to have at least one or two? We might have as many as 14?
There are many factors that play into these circumstances that lead up to a possible blackout. Weather, gas supplies, we talked about, gas system operations and maintenance. I wish that I could tell you that I know exactly how many days we're going to be out this summer. We don't know.
But do you know that we will be out? I mean, is that, is that, is that a pretty strong?
Our analyses show that if we have a conventional year using past historical consumption and weather patterns, that we do face that risk of 14 days this summer. The 23 days is a year-long look at it, but we're really focusing on the summer now. 14 days this summer, we're at the greatest risk.
And do we know where those blackouts may occur?
No. They reach across the entire Southland, and maybe General Manager Edwards would like to talk about kind of how her sister.
And towards that question, on page 21 of the action plan, it states the gas pressure and the distribution systems were lowest at the southern end of the LA basin, furthest away from Aliso Creek. So does that mean the blackouts would be more likely to occur in the southern end of the delivery system, which stretches all the way to Huntington Beach? Or is there, is there an equal probability anywhere along the system?
We have found an equal probability across the entire system.
I didn't mean to cut you off, gentlemen.
I can only really underscore what Tom said. That may be where the gas flow itself is the weakest, but that doesn't translate into a surrounding geographical footprint for electricity. So, the ISO is significantly larger than DWP. When they realize that they're having gas curtailment issues, they can move resources around. We can too, to a limited extent, but there are scenarios that develop where we've exhausted everything that we're necessarily able to do. I also want to make a comment with respect to warning. We can make the assumption that the system is going to be exposed during your typical high-risk periods where it's hot, but there are a lot of things that can happen: a utility-related outage, gas company outage of planned equipment, to where we'll get little to no warning. We'll share it the moment we get it, but it's not something that we can necessarily program or tell people in advance.
I just wanted to add on the amount of certainty and number of days is, there's a great deal of uncertainty about the number of days. What we've done is a modeling exercise. We've had a historical examination, and variabilities include the weather. And perfect operation of the electrical system and the pipeline system, and a number of externalities that can affect it. So, what the agencies here have worked together is try to define plausible circumstances that could easily happen and to provide advice and mitigation. Right now, we're trying to operate the system in a way that it's never been run before, and part of that is predicting ahead with great precision how much gas is going to be needed for electricity generation and other uses. Exactly.
In that modeling, though, is there an average of how long these blackouts would last? We're not talking two minutes.
Can we talk about that just for a minute? That's an important question. We all remember the blackouts of the energy crisis. There was a blackout in San Diego some years back. This type of blackout is more, shall we say, manageable in that we have some notice that it's going to occur. We are able to alert the utilities, in this case, Southern California Edison, and then, of course, Los Angeles has its own utility. We're able to alert those utilities in advance so that they can stage the outages rather than have them be a catastrophic cascading outage across wide areas. So, sometimes the term has been used, rolling outages, where one neighborhood gets taken out for an hour or two, brought back up, and another neighborhood is taken out for an hour or two. So, it leaves us a level of control in a difficult time that we don't have during, if you will, a catastrophic system outage.
It's important to note, too, that those rolling blackouts or rotating outages can't be done with surgical precision. I can't say it's this leaf on a tree or this branch. We're talking about separating 50,000 to 100,000 customers at one time for an hour, then restoring them, and if we still have insufficient supply, taking out another block. But those blocks will be dependent on how the system is configured in real time.
Okay. A bunch of questions up, but I see my time, so I'm going to ask one last question more generically about the amount of, about the gas in Aliso Creek itself. CPUC is placed in order to hold gas inventory at 15 billion cubic feet, and we're saying at some point, the well is not leaking, can hold up to 85 billion. So, what is magical about 15? You know, is it, obviously, people don't think it's safe to inject the well further, so why is it safe to inject the well with 15 if it's not safe to inject the well with 85?
Well, so first off, there's no injections allowed at all until the inspections have been done, so there's no new injections. As they withdraw gas out of the field, that 15 number will go down further and further and won't be replenished. How we came to the calculation of ordering SoCal Gas to keep the 15 billion cubic feet in the field unless needed for reliability purposes was an earlier analysis where, again, we looked at historical trends. We looked at what was needed in the field to meet a peak demand day in the winter, and what was needed to meet demand in the summer on a particular day. And you need at least 5 billion in the field to create the pressure for the gas to come out of the field to meet that one-day demand. That one-day demand is approximately 0.6 billion, so the 5 billion isn't the whole demand. But then, we looked at, historically, how much has been used for reliability purposes in the winter and how much has been used in the summer. In the winter, it's roughly 5 billion; in the summer, it's roughly 5 billion. So, if we wanted to end the summer with some level of reliability, we needed to have that 5 billion draw out in the summer and then that 5 billion to draw out in the winter. That's how we got to the original rough analysis that we did in January for the order of the 15. We're lucky that this winter was unseasonably warm. We're lucky on this issue, on the drought issue, we aren't lucky. But we didn't withdraw any gas out of the field this winter, which we anticipated they would have. So, there is a little additional cushion in the field right now for extreme events this summer, but we still don't know what the summer looks like. If it's an extreme-weather summer, they could still wind up, for reliability purposes, drawing more out. One of our action plan items is to manage that remaining 15 very prudently. So, only withdraw that gas out if it's needed for electric reliability and for no other purpose.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Council President Wesson, and thank you for the presentation. I did want to touch on one more point that Mr. Bloomingfield, I think, covered really well about the blackouts and the curtailment. Does the department have the ability to, you were beginning to talk about sort of our inability to be surgical, and I just want to underscore the point: dialysis centers, hospitals, Silicon Beach data centers, our ADsAC systems, do we have the ability to understand all of the arteries of electricity in the city and maintain the power in some of those areas, or is it just big blocks on a map that would be turned off?
It's basically the latter.
Okay. So, that's really bad news. One hour, I mean, so productivity, economic vitality, health and public safety, this is really, really bad news. I do want to take a little sort of detour from where Mr. Englander was taking us on a second ago. I completely agree that what's happened at Aliso Canyon is a terrible situation, and I hope that after all of the investigation, all of the conversation about policy, that we figure out how to make sure a situation like that is prevented, never, ever happens again. But we can't separate, we must separate ourselves from the feelings and the emotion of what's happened with what's about to happen if we're not careful. 10,000 megawatts is significant. Santa Nobre was a big blow to the system. I think, in fact, this group came together to deal with Santa Nobre. Now, we're dealing with a problem that is five times larger than that. I couldn't agree more about our need to educate the public and figure out how to revamp, maybe even amplify, the Flex Alert system, Flex Your Power campaign. In Japan, they have figured out how to adjust their thermometers to 82 degrees in every commercial building. It is sweaty and uncomfortable. I've been there. But it's a cultural thing after the change that happened with the nuclear disaster there. They didn't have a choice, and I'd argue that we have a lot of choices ahead of us. Now, the bad news, colleagues, is that Mr. Englander is absolutely right. There is little to no consequence for our advocacy in the state legislature to say that they ought to do this, that, or the other through resolution. That's, in some part, really bad news for us, because we don't have the ability to sort of advocate for policy that will fix the problem and keep the lights and powers on. We do have the political flexibility to say what we think ought to happen. That might be popular, but it's not terribly responsible when our charge is to make sure that our communities are safe, economically viable, and secure. And so, this is a real problem. I very much appreciated the fact that it was mentioned that there's a lot of uncertainty yet ahead. It is not a guaranteed thing that these blackouts will happen. It is to say, though, that if we don't act responsibly, this is exactly what's going to happen. So, I absolutely thank you for your presentation, the conversation, and the efforts that you all are endeavoring to move towards to make sure that we maintain the system reliable and dependable. The last thing that I'll say, colleagues, is that, especially for those that are on the committee, we have a very exciting conversation coming up about reliability. It's called the Integrated Resource Plan for the Department of Water and Power. And in that IRP, we look at different types of models. If we ramped up to 50% or 60% renewable energy, if we shot the moon and get to 100%, in a lot of those scenarios, today, with the technology that exists and our educated populace, we still have to curtail load and shed, and that's not accounting for the disaster that's taken place at Aliso Canyon. So, a lot easier to say, much harder to do if you want to keep the system reliable. Thank you so much for the presentation. And colleagues, this was for information only. We're going to get the calls, no doubt, in short order, if we don't figure out collectively how to make sure that we don't have interruption to our service. So, I recommend that we note and file the report, request the department to provide continuous updates to the City Council on the implementation of the Aliso Canyon Action Plan. Again, thank you for the trip to Southern California, for those of you who are visiting, and of course, General Manager Edwards and Dr. Pickle for your stewardship. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, and if there's no objection, we will just note, note and file this. Thank you again. Mr. Kurets, it's my understanding you have an introduction.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's my privilege to introduce Dr. Leela Lewis, who is the president of Your Pathway to Health, an incredible nonprofit organization associated with the Seventh Day Adventist Church, and they're putting on a wonderful three-day event at the Convention Center, April 27th through 29th, where they'll be offering free medical care to everyone who goes, no insurance or ID required. It's entirely volunteer, and they'll have 4,300 volunteers to help an expected 10,000 to 12,000 patients, served on a first-come, first-served basis. Now, they'll also do major surgery. If you want to do major surgery, you'll need to do some pre-screening and to submit it by this Friday, online at the PathwayToHealth.org website or at 888-44-PATHWAY. Let's give a big round of applause to Dr. Lewis and everyone involved. And I also want to thank Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Price, because I know they've both been very involved in making this happen and helping it happen.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Price, what we're going to do, we're going to move to item 25. Mr. City Attorney and Clerk, what I'm going to do is reopen public comment, if that's okay with the chair. I'm going to do one minute for the next 10 minutes, and then we'll get into the conversation. So, if it's okay with you, Mr. Price, we'll hear from the public first. Okay, and so, we'll go with, I think, is it Daniel Olis, Jennifer Orjinia Cassidy, and Villanueva, is it Manuel Villanueva, Maya Paley? Please come forward. Please come forward. Please come forward if you want to speak. If I've called your name, please come forward. Please. Okay, identify yourself.
Hello. My name is Jenia Cassidy, and I'm here to speak on the issue of paid sick days. I'm with the California Work and Family Coalition. We're a statewide organization, and we are part of a national movement for paid sick days. We're here in support of LA passing a strong paid sick days measure. We found that, you know, since San Francisco passed paid sick days in 2006, it's been really great for the city, it's been good for business, it's been healthy for workers. Business has not seen a negative impact from this, and for a healthy LA, we really need Los Angeles to be a leader in this and pass a strong paid sick days measure today. Thank you.
Please, come on, identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Maya Paley, and I represent the 2,500 members and supporters of the National Council of Jewish Women, Los Angeles. I also represent the LA Coalition for Reproductive Justice and the California Work and Family Coalition. I'm here to urge you all to support the motion for earned sick days with six days and no requirements for doctor's notes, which would be a costly requirement for LA workers. NCJW LA has eight thrift stores, so we know what it's like to run a business. We also know how hard it is, as our store revenue is our main source of support for all the direct services our nonprofit provides to 12,000 LA community members. We provide each employee with 12 earned sick days a year, and we do that because it's the right thing to do. It's right for the employees, it's right for the customers, and it's right for their families and friends. All workers, whether they are nonprofit, part or full-time, large or small business employees, deserve to be able to care for their own health and their loved ones' health without worrying about losing their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and wait till I call your name before you come forward. Did I call your name, sir?
Daniel Coz.
Okay, then you're up, and after you, Manuel Villanueva, and then Mr. Rusty Hicks. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Daniel Coz. I'm here to speak to you about the sick time policy expansion. I am currently 23-year Walmart associate. I am here to talk to you on behalf of my Walmart associates to urge you to pass that expanded, sick time expanded policy, please. We need it, because I, actually, half of my associates have to be making decisions whether to go to work or take care of our loved ones. So, I'm urging you to please pass that sick time expanded policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, do I have a Villanueva? If not, Mr. Hicks, Martha Sanchez, Rosemary Jenkins. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President. Members of the council, Rusty Hicks with the LA County Federation of Labor. About 15 months ago, we stood on the South Steps here at City Hall and declared the campaign to raise the wage. It was raising the wage to $15 an hour, enforcing the wage, whatever the wage was, and giving workers the paid sick days that they needed and wanted. And you've done two, you've stepped forward and done two of those platforms. You've raised the wage with the city, and the county have followed, and now the state, and you've put in place a solid wage enforcement policy, not only at the city, but ultimately at the county as well. Today, you have the opportunity to complete the last part of that campaign, of that effort, to take a step forward, to ensure that workers don't have to make a decision between putting food on the table and paying rent, but they can care for themselves or for their family. I know there's some question about whether small businesses should be required to provide sick days. Well, a worker doesn't have to, shouldn't have to make a choice between working for a large business or a small business. All workers should have the opportunity of paid sick days. Thanks.
Thank you. So, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Martha Sanchez. I'm with ACE, and I'm here to support the paid sick days. Last year, my husband went to the hospital in urgent medical treatment. He spent 30 days at home, not being able to work. I was injured, and I couldn't work at the time as well, and we missed 30 days of payment. It was really hard for our family to survive without paying the mortgage and being faced by the fact that tax property were due as well. So, we believe that six days, maybe it's not enough, but it would be better than having three days, and it is good for the families, the hard-working families, low-income families, and people of color. Thank you so much for supporting this measure, and thank you so much, Councilmember Price, for taking the leadership to support it. Thanks.
Okay, so if I could get Ms. Jenkins, and I think I have a Marilyn, I think it's a Saltsmary, and a Ruth Dawson, please come forward. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Rosemary Jenkins. I'm here to ask you to support this measure. As a teacher, parent, grandparent, citizen of the community, it is very important to consider the safety and health ramifications of paid sick leave. When children have to come to school because their parents have to go to work, and they're spreading disease from one child to another, let alone the staff, and the parent is not able to for fear of retaliation or being fired, that parent needs to be able to take time off to take care of a child. Similarly, when they are on their job and they're ill, particularly with restaurant workers and supermarket workers, we don't want sick people handling food and other materials that could contaminate the customer. So, I thank you for the committees that have passed and supported this, and I'm asking the same for the full council. Thank you.
Thank you. So, please come forward and identify yourself.
Yes. Hi, my name is Marilyn Zapparri, and I'm on the board of the National Council of Jewish Women. I'm here to urge you to support the motion for expanded earned sick days for Los Angeles workers for beyond what the state of California provides. I owned a business in the entertainment industry for 20 years in Los Angeles. We had six employees. During good times and bad times, I always... During good times and bad times, I always gave my employees sick leave, and I understand how important it is for all employees to take that time to be able to heal. I've heard many stories about workers in Los Angeles who are not given any sick days at all, and I feel that adding this policy in Los Angeles will ensure that sick days are enforced along with the minimum wage requirement. I also want to make sure to highlight that an important expanded definition of family is really important, that there are a lot of people who I know who don't have a spouse or a husband or a wife, and they need to have friends take care of them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I could get Ms. Dawson, Mr. John Holland, Melissa Akaba. In fact, Rabbi, I'm going to save you to be the closer, so I want to have Mr. Zuma Dog, you come up after Melissa Akaba. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Ruth Dawson. I'm an attorney with the ACLU of Southern California, and also a proud member of the Raise the Wage Coalition. As you've heard today, workers in Los Angeles too often are forced to choose between taking care of themselves and putting food on the table, between taking care of their children and paying this month's rent. So we know that workers go to work sick. They delay important and potentially life-saving healthcare to survive in this city. And some workers have been told that if they do take care of themselves by taking a sick day, their job won't be there for them when they get back. This hurts the health not only of the workers, but also of their families and of the public. Today, LA has an important opportunity to improve the health of our workers, and also to uplift their basic dignity, and to take a step closer to social justice. We thank Councilmember Price for proposing this important ordinance, and just to highlight an important piece of this ordinance, which is that it is inclusive of all of our diverse families. It will allow workers to take care of family members who are related by both blood and affinity, which is especially important for our attribute to key workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Akaba, and I am with Clinica Oscar Romero, and also the California Work and Family Coalition. With Clinica Oscar Romero is a federally qualified healthcare center. We have two clinics, one in Boyle Heights, and another one in the Pico Union area. And many of our patients work for small businesses. They are among them hotel workers, restaurant workers, and so forth. So we also know these employees. They live in communities that experience a disproportionately higher level of vulnerability to chronic diseases and other health issues. In our clinics, one of the leading causes of delayed or missed appointments is the inability to take paid time off from work. Our patients should not have to choose between caring for their own health or an ill-loved one versus losing a day's wage, or even worse, their job. And this is why Clinica Romero stands behind stronger paid sick days legislation, and we ask you to support six days. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland. Yes, sir.
Good morning. John Holland with the Central City Association. All of the increase in the minimum wage the city enacted last year will begin in just a few months. This will have a big impact and a big burden on our local businesses. This increase in the number of sick days will also have an impact, so I request, we request that the city include the impacts of additional days off in its ongoing studies of the impact of the minimum wage. Many businesses throughout the city and throughout the state are still trying to come to grips with how they enact the three days that the state has done. This is especially true with our members in the restaurant and nightlife industry. We also ask that these days not be portable. If this is, as some people have said, when you're sick, you're sick, you should not come in and make either your coworkers or your clients ill. So these days should not be portable and should not be paid off at the end. When someone is sick, they should take the sick days, and they should not try and cash out at the end of their time with the business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Mr. Dog, followed by Rabbi Klein to close. And any cards that I got after the conversation began, we will enter those into the record. So, Mr. Dog.
Thank you. Zuma Dog, ZumaDog.com, man of the people, low-income myself. I hate to rain on everybody's parade. Doesn't this sound great? Gee, we can't infect each other. Gee, low-income. Gee, hard-working. Why don't we throw kids and pets into it also? But here's the problem. This doubles it from three to six. Los Angeles will require double the sick pay of the rest of the county and state. This is deal with the devil. The people who think they're being helped are going to be hurt the most. Business will leave Los Angeles. There'll be Culver City, Santa Monica, elsewhere in the states. Business will leave. Other businesses, gee, I'm going to start a big business, I'm Google, I'm some high-tech or mom-and-pop or whatever, I want to start a, yay, LA! You just put a repellent electric dog fence for all businesses to think of starting up here, because guess what? City of Los Angeles requires double the sick pay. And guess what? After 30 days, after 30 days, you get six days. Insanity. No vote.
Okay, Rabbi Klein, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Rabbi Jonathan Klein with Clue, clergy and lay tonight for economic justice. Look, I think you're going to do this. I would be really shocked if you didn't. It's pretty common sense that people just need to be able to get better. You know, all of us have dealt with our own health crises along the way, and we want the dignity and respect that comes from the opportunity to heal from what is hurting in our bodies or that of our loved ones who are impacted by this. So we're just calling on you to do what is obvious and what is right. We say in the Jewish tradition that God is a Rofah Holim, that is a healer of the sick. God can only do his or her part, depending on your views on God, if there's space for people to heal. So please, just enable people to do this. It's not a big burden on business, and it goes a long way to building morale and respect and dignity for all people. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, that concludes public comment. Madam Clerk and Mr. City Attorney, on this item. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, eight months ago, this council approved historic minimum wage legislation. I was honored to be one of the authors and to chair the Economic Development Committee that held numerous hearings, both in this building and in the community, to debate the issue. Since then, the state has built upon our work and signed a minimum wage that will in a few years get to $15. And just last week, the governor signed a more generous family leave policy. As I said from the beginning, and many have said, paid sick leave was a critical component of our minimum wage law. For while raising the wage is certainly an important step, it doesn't help a worker when he's not protected from being fired or losing a job, or taking a hidden pay because of an illness of someone in his family. On many occasions, I've heard stories from individuals who complain about having to choose between going to the doctor or not getting paid, and those are difficult decisions that no one should really have to make. Paid sick leave is a right that many people enjoy already, and even come, many have come to expect that, including those of us here around the horseshoe. And I believe that we can extend the right to paid sick leave for workers in Los Angeles, and we can do it without negatively impacting businesses that they're working for. Because this is not only the right thing to do, it's a smart thing to do. As it's been said before, employees who come to work sick are unproductive, risk spreading germs not only to their coworkers, but to customers. And let me remind you that paid sick leave has been a part of every living wage policy the city has passed in the last 20 years. 20 years ago, LA was a pioneer, second stage for others to follow, by moving forward with a positive, progressive paid leave policy. And we think that this approach, even extending the term of family, one that's most expansive in the nation, we're setting the bar, a high bar, and a responsible bar for others to follow. Just a few weeks from now, on July 1, we're going to see the fruit of our labors coming to bear when the minimum wage law kicks into effect. Let's also include six days of paid leave as a way of improving the quality of life for the citizens that we represent. We're going to be hearing, I know, a number of amendments totally opposed to any amendment that would exempt small businesses. We certainly appreciate the challenges small businesses have, but I think it's unfair to penalize those who are working for a small business, a business with fewer than 25 employees, to exempt them entirely from this provision, because it does impact the quality of life, not only for their families, not only for the business, but for our community. So, members, I urge an eye vote on the matter before us.
Thank you. Mr. Keretz.
Mr. President, I think this issue is kind of a no-brainer. I think there's no advantage to requiring that employees come sick to work. And I think if we study this afterwards, we'll find that you'll make up in increased productivity what you might lose in paying for several days' sick days, because people won't come to work when they're sick, and they won't spread it to their colleagues, and I think you'll have a healthier workforce for it. I think this makes tremendous sense. I know it's been implemented in other cities at a higher number. There are other places that have nine sick days a week. I think this is a very fair compromise. Yeah, nine sick days a year. Nine a week would be a lot. But I think this is a very fair compromise and an intelligent compromise, and I know we're going to pass this today.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few questions if the CLA and City Attorney's Office could just step up, just for clarification purposes. So, just a few, this won't take very long, but many small and mid-sized and large-scale companies offer paid time off for one week after the first year. I know when I first moved to Los Angeles, I got a job and to make ends meet, and so I could, you know, do my studies. And I, it was part-time, it was about 32 hours a week, and I, the company, very small business that I worked for, gave all of us a full week off after one year worked. So, how would this policy affect those businesses that are currently, have their own plans for their employees in terms of paid time off, regardless of if they call them sick days or just vacation days?
Either way. So with regard to Sharon So, CLA's office, so with regard to accrual, you still have to meet the minimum state requirements. So whatever the minimum state requirements are in terms of accrual, if a company provides one week of time off, then as long as it still meets the state requirements of accrual, that would be sufficient, so they would not need to provide additional sick time. So the minimum requirements are established by state law. If we have a city policy that is modeled after state that provides more hours, then we would also have to meet those higher number of hours. But as long as a paid time off policy meets whatever the city requirements are, then there would be no requirement for additional sick time hours.
And is that modeling commensurate with the new statewide minimum wage law that was just passed?
Yes. So the committee acted to approve a policy that is modeled after the state law. The only real changes to that state law is additional hours, a higher cap, an expanded definition of family member.
Okay. And then, what will enforcement from the Office of Wage Standards be? How will its purview be codified? Can you explain the parameters that will be given, and the repercussions if businesses do not follow in this law? And lastly, what sort of outreach are we doing? How will all the small businesses, and I've argued this before, I think the vast amount of them aren't just, aren't going to know that we have a new minimum wage ordinance, much less the new paid sick days piece. How are we going to reach all of the small businesses in the city?
So the Bureau of Contract Administration, I imagine, has already requested additional staffing to provide that outreach to all businesses in the city, especially as it relates to the minimum wage. This would be an additional notification that they would be required to do as soon as this policy is effectuated by ordinance. So, City Attorney will be coming back with recommendations consistent with state law, I imagine, that would impose the same types of penalties and compliance requirements for the city law.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, oh, please.
And it will be codified in the municipal code.
Okay.
The sick provisions will go in with the minimum wage into our municipal code.
Great. I just want to, and I've said this in committee before, that I want to state for the record that it's so, it's going to be so much better for businesses and their employees to make sure that we have a broad education piece, so that everyone knows what their rights are and what their obligations are. So much better than if we have this punitive approach to just going after the ones who are, you know, not doing it. That doesn't, that's not really going to help anyone, so I just want to make sure we have a robust outreach effort. And then, lastly, legal implications accrued, what are the legal implications of accrued sick leave carrying over the following year?
We believe that's a lawful provision. It would allow an employee who, you know, shows up for work but then has a more serious disease, a surgery, or a family member who has a more serious disease, to get the full benefit of booking that time and keeping it for a real rainy day. It actually encourages employees not to use the days when they're not, they don't need to.
And use them when they really need to.
For serious illnesses.
And then, in relation to the cap, in relation to sick leave, will it be assumed that the cap is in place unless the employer changes it, or is it an opt-in or opt-out as far as the cap?
So the cap is actually a minimum. An employer could provide additional hours or a higher cap if they wish. One interesting provision in state law is actually, if an employer provides the time upfront, in other words, there's no accrual, then the cap actually goes away. In other words, it doesn't carry over from year to year. So an employer could actually choose to, if our law is modeled after the state law, that an employer could choose to provide 48 hours upfront, no accrual, to every employee, and then upon the calendar year, January 1, or whatever timeframe they specify, there actually wouldn't be a carryover.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr. President, this is the last one. If an employer doesn't choose either-or, what is the employer obligated to?
So the employer would be obligated to provide for every hour worked. They would provide for every 30 hours worked, they would be required to pay, provide one hour of sick time as an alternative, but there are other requirements that it has to be accrued within a time, a certain time period. So one hour for every 30. Or another way of complying would be for, as in some industries, and as specified in the committee report, certain industries actually pay their employees for time off. So if they make a payment to that employee, then it would be compliant with our city law if that payment of time is consistent with the number of hours that would be required under our sick leave policy.
Accrued sick leave is commensurate with hours worked, full-time vis-à-vis, part-time one day a week. It accrues in a similar fashion.
One hour for every 30 hours worked, yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. A few people have mentioned appropriately that it's important to ensure that we don't ask sick people to come to work, and of course, that's true. But I think that this measure does more than that. This measure is important to keep families together, to keep families healthy. And when an employee has to make a choice between going to work and being able to put food on the table, or taking care of a sick child, or a spouse, or someone else in their family, that's an inexcusable choice to subject an employee to. And so I think that this is a very important step forward that we're taking today. And I'm especially proud of the work that we did in committee and that Mr. Price did in leading this effort in broadening the definition of the family members to which this policy applies. It's vitally important that Los Angeles leads on this issue, and I'm appreciative that we took that step forward. I think having expanded sick days also, in many respects, helps our workforce. It provides greater stability. It provides greater stability in the place of employment. It provides an opportunity for higher morale, lower turnover, and so there are significant benefits there. And then, finally, to our local economy. When a Walmart, say, who, some of the employees of Walmart were here today, when a Walmart, an international company, one of the largest retailer in the world, is providing these sort of basic benefits to Los Angeles employees, that means that that international corporation, instead of enriching Sam Walton and his family a little bit more, is helping to put food on the table of Los Angeles residents and provide more disposable income that will be spent in our local economy with other businesses. So, I think it's good for our economy, and it's good for our employees. When we, when, when we passed the minimum wage law here, the state of California followed our lead. I think we should all be very proud that Governor Brown signed a minimum wage law that was essentially modeled after the work of this city council. And I think that was part of our objective, is the idea, if we stepped forward as a city, others would follow. In this case, with sick pay, we're following, in some respects, we're following behind the state. The state has already acted on this with their three days. And so, that brings me to the point, I think that Mr. O'Farrell was starting to raise about impacts on small businesses who may not even be aware that these changes are coming. And I want to talk about that just a little bit. In this city, about 88% of our employees work for large businesses. So, that leaves a very small fragment of our workforce that's working for the mom-and-pop businesses that are struggling to get by. They're not the Walmarts of the world. They're people who show up to work every day with their employees and, and try to make a go of it. And those are the businesses that I'm concerned about adding extra costs to, because we don't know whether that'll have a positive or a negative impact on those employees. Because those small businesses, who are especially vulnerable to additional costs, will make up those costs in other ways, by reducing hours, by reducing employment, and so on. So, I'm concerned that if we don't provide some relief for small businesses in this, it may have a counterintuitive negative effect for the, that small portion of employees who work for those small employers. So, I think that what I would like to propose, and I will be introducing a motion with Mr. O'Farrell shortly, delayed implementation for small businesses, so that they can start to get accustomed to the idea of the state law first, figure out how to implement those three days, figure out how to implement the increased minimum wage, and then after delay, they fall in line with other employees. And then, I guess the final point that I would just make, oh, I actually had a question before I move on to that. We struggled a little bit when we were working on the minimum wage ordinance in figuring out how to define a Los Angeles employee. So, we have many employees who are transient, who spend part of their time in Los Angeles, part of their time working elsewhere, say, a delivery driver or something. That's the example I used a lot with the minimum wage. Somebody who maybe, you know, works in Los Angeles 30% of the time, or 70% of the time some weeks, or how are we, have we figured out how to address the implementation of the ordinance when it comes to folks who are working in Los Angeles less than 100% of the time?
Yes, the City Attorney's Office will be providing a report back on the issue of transient employees and, and the options for proportional allocation of not just the minimum wage, but sick time as well.
Okay, so, when, when the ordinance comes back, you'll provide us with some options that we can consider to include in the ordinance on that?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then, also, when you're reporting back on options that we might consider. The other thing that I think especially affects small businesses, but probably affects other businesses as well, is ensuring that our, our, our Labor Enforcement Office here in the city has the tools that it will need to ensure that both businesses are being compliant, and also that these benefits, that this extra sick day requirement is not abused by this, a small number of people who might try to abuse it. And there's been talk in other cities, and I think in the state as well, about documentation requirement. One of the speakers mentioned that that would be a cost element. That makes sense. But I think that we should at least get a report back on what options we might have for giving employers the option of requiring some kind of documentation. Maybe it's not a doctor's note. Maybe it's some other kind of documentation, but, so that we reduce the cost to the employee. But just some component in there that will provide a vehicle to prevent the potential for abuse of, of sick days when, when they're not needed. So, with, with those two changes, though, I would stand in strong support of this, and I think we have an opportunity, again, to lead our state, and hopefully to be a part of a movement across this country to provide a, a workplace that takes care of its employees and its employees' families, and it's just the right thing to do.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Price, and to the members of your committee for the work that you did on this, for moving forward on a piece of the legislation we started last year with the minimum wage, that we tried to get done then, in making sure that the right thing was done with this piece of legislation. You know, it's so easy for so many people to forget that there are hundreds of thousands of people, huge swaths of our population in Los Angeles that live on the economic margins, that are literally forced to make a decision about whether or not to have enough food, to have enough money to feed their family, or to stay home and take care of themselves when they're sick. It's wrong that people have to make that choice. It's almost sort of from the 19th century that that's still the case. And across the country, 17 cities, a number of states have put in place legislation to make sure that folks don't have to make that choice. It's the right thing to do, but it's also the smart thing to do. It makes no sense to force someone who's preparing food in a restaurant to come to work sick and potentially expose the customers. It makes no sense for someone to, who's waiting on tables, to come to work sick and potentially infect all of their coworkers. And this is a way to protect the public health. It's economic justice, and it's protecting the public health, and it is the right thing to do. It follows in a tradition that this city has had for a very long time, with living wage and minimum wage and, and, and other protections. This is the right thing to do, it's a smart thing to do, and it's a very Los Angeles thing to do. So, thank you for your work on this.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Price, and to your committee for doing this amazing work. And you know, it's, it's very unconscionable that it took this long, that it took this long for a sick policy leave to even come into place. You know, the state, the city, I mean, it took 2015 for us to come up with this policy. And I, like my colleagues, don't want to force sick employees to work, especially in our restaurant, restaurant sectors, and this is the right thing to do. Moreover, you know, many of the business associations may disagree, but I'm not concerned too much about the big businesses and corporations who will more than be able to absorb these costs. What I'm concerned about is the small business, the mom-and-pop shops. You know, my family, we're the working class. My mom and dad worked two, three jobs. We saved just enough money to open up our small toy store. I worked there, and eventually, we got one employee because I had to go to school. And every penny counted. And these are the people, the small businesses, that need our help. You know, I want the workers to realize their American dream. I want them to graduate from being employees to become employers. I want them to have become a small business owner. I want them to experience homeownership. And, and it almost feels like we're pitting the poor against the poor here. And I understand that six days is a compromise, and no, no doubt, we need a sick leave policy. But just last week, in my own district, I just happened to go door-to-door in Miracle Mile, speaking to every small business owner, and they were telling me their struggles. And I looked them in the eye, and I said, you know, "City Hall, City Council, I personally promise you that we are going to do things to help small business, for you to think that we are your partners, and, and do what we can to help them." So, while we need sick leave policy, I think we need to give these small businesses some sort of reprieve, which is why I introduced an amendment, and I asked my colleagues for your "I-vote" and your support. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Price to close.
Thank you, members, for the enlightening and informed discussion. I think offering this benefit is the right thing to do, it's a smart thing to do. Has been repeated. The consequences of people working when they're sick and unable to perform properly is, is not good for the business, is not good for the individuals, is not good for the community. So, I'm hopeful that we can move forward, continuing the tradition of Los Angeles, setting the pace, setting a high standard, a reasonable standard, and working to improve the quality of life for all Angelinos. I urge an "I-vote." Thank you.
Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, why don't you walk the members through where, where we are? We have a couple of votes on this item.
Yes. Three motions have been distributed, 25A, 25B, 25C, and all three can be voted on individually. 25C should be the first vote.
Okay. Then let's prepare to vote on 25C. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
And the next, the next vote would be on 25B.
Okay, and B, that's the, we should vote on A at this point, or?
25B is introduced by O'Farrell and Krikorian. And that's to amend the Economic Development Committee report to include in the ordinance a provision that the ordinance provide a one-year delay for small businesses as defined in the minimum wage ordinance.
Okay, but if we vote for this and it passes, there'll be no vote on A, right? Or what?
We can still vote on A, yes.
We could?
Yes.
Okay, then let's vote, we'll then go to B, which is the O'Farrell/Krikorian. Mr. Price?
[inaudible]
Okay, this, this is, this is the O'Farrell/Krikorian amendment. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now, we will vote on 25A, which is Mr. Ru's.
Mr. President, can you read it in for the record?
Madam Clerk, if you could read into 25A.
25A, amend the Economic Development Committee report. It amends Recommendation 3A to read that an employee who on or after July 1, 2016, works in the city for the same employer, working for an employer with more than 25 full-time equivalent employees for 30 days or more within a year from the commencement of employment, is entitled to paid sick leave. Additionally, add Recommendation 4 to read, instruct the CLA to report annually with the regularly scheduled minimum wage status reports on the impacts of the current state three-day sick leave policy on small businesses, and on further research on the cost and benefits of applying a six-day sick leave policy on small businesses versus a three-day policy.
Thank you. So, on this, is my understanding, Mr. Ru is asking for an "I-vote" or a "yes" vote, Mr. Price is asking for a "no" vote. If we could open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
7 ayes, 7 noes.
That motion fails.
So now, we, so we'll vote at, wait a minute.
No, I think.
Is there, was there a mistake in the?
No, I'm, I'm a no.
So, do we have a typo, or glitch? So, what do we do, Mr. City Attorney?
It's just, it doesn't change the outcome, so it should be a 6 to 8.
Okay, with Mr. Price.
And there should be a vote on the.
Listed as a "no" and not a "yes"? And so, now, we vote on the entire? Let us open the roll, close?
Excuse me, Mr. President? So, that would be Item 25, as amended by motions 25C and 25B.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
Okay. That brings us where? In fact, now, Mr. Sadio, what is this, Item 14, which is council file 151041-Z-S2? We need to vote on reconsideration? Is that the proper way to do that, Madam Clerk?
The vote for reconsideration has already been taken. This is now a vote for the substitute motion, which has been distributed, and then on the matter itself. So, two votes required.
Okay, so, it seems like all of the questions were related to this item have been resolved. Let us prepare to vote, let's open the roll. Oh, whoa, whoa. Oh, I'm sorry, I have two cards on this. So, I have Mr. Abraham George and Mr. Previn. Please come forward.
Yeah, you called my name? You're on 14 from Friday?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, good. Okay, I object to the reconsideration without placing it on the agenda. Brown Act 549542A2 says, "No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda." And the Act does allow you to, according to your own rules, to take action, to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda, but it does not relieve the responsibility to agendize the action, because it says, "No action," and it describes placing something on the agenda as "to take action." And the act, the word "action" is what, is what makes the difficulty for it not being on the agenda. So, any, any action to reconsider is itself an action, to which the public is entitled to the 72-hour notification.
Thank you. Thank you. So, if I can have Mr. Previn? Wait a minute. Did we only give Mr. Abraham's one minute on that? Mr. Abraham's, we should be back at the two minutes on this. This is not a special hearing. So, just hold, Mr. Previn, give him another minute, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay. All right, so, an action to reconsider itself is itself an action, to which the public is entitled to 72-hour notification to come speak. And I'm sensitive to this issue, because this has happened to me in the Central Area Planning Commission last week, under the Children's Hospital case. I won the appeal, and then, at the next regular meeting, the Central Air Planning Commission commissioners voted to reconsider. And I objected to the, to that on the same basis in which I am objecting to the issue before you now. And the City Attorney in that case advised the Central Air Planning Commission to rescind its reconsideration. And so, this, and he says that the rules in the future are going to have to be changed citywide, and so I wish you to take note of that in this particular action, because at some point, someone who cares about this issue, and it doesn't even matter what this issue is to me, they're just not following the Brown Act.
Mr. Previn.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD2, and I have a very similar concern. This item was described as a substitute motion for something that appeared on an agenda on Friday, Item 14. It is not the Item 14 for today's agenda, so none of the people here know what happened. The only reason we do know is because you made a little announcement. That is insufficient, because there are residents throughout the city of Los Angeles who are entitled to noticed agenda items, so that when there is a change. Now, in this particular case, there is a change that I detected on the, on the document that's attached to the wall. The Body Cam Video Trust Fund, or something like that, Reserve Fund, I believe, was the fund that we were borrowing 4.4 million, which resulted in many questions from the LA Times and a series of articles about that behavior with the body cameras and the tasers. But in fact, the money is Mr. Sadio's project. He, he's a guy who comes across as a terrific leader and then doesn't show up on various occasions. And then, when people are violated right here in the City Hall, he doesn't, he doesn't stand up for them. He, he looks away and is a tough guy. He looks away and is a tough guy. So I don't like that. And I do find the violations of this body, of the Brown Act, on a regular basis, there are many tricks you use in addition to the substitute motion. We all remember when Bloomingfield gets a phone call from Buscagino, who's going to change the request for qualifications to RFP. This behavior, sir, is under the leadership of a group that is trying to trick their public, which is not appropriate, because the open government transparency laws are, in fact, for just the opposite purpose. Everything has to be agendized. And when you put something on a special meeting with just 24 hours notice, sir, you talk to Mr. O'Connell, who's schwitzing about that right now, because it is not proper to do that without taking comment. If you have a shortened notice period of special meeting, you take comment. That's what Ms. Krikorian's going to find at some point. That's what everybody will find, because that's the law. So I would appreciate it if you would make better efforts to comply with the Brown Act here in this open session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, this vote is on the substitute? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And now that we actually vote on the issue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Sadio, that's done. Item 27, Mr. Walsh? Item 27, Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh passes. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that should bring us then to... In fact, Mr. Fuentes, on your item, there were two public speakers, so I want to reconsider. Was that Item 32? Let them speak, and then we'll note and file it again if that's acceptable with you. So on 32, I had Rosemary Jenkins and Alextra Navy Nagy. Please come forward. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Rosemary Jenkins. I first want to thank council member Mitch Englander, who's my council member, for all the hard work he has done on behalf of the Eliso Canyon problem. Now, we know that the SS-25 well has been permanently sealed, but there are another 114 wells, and there have been recent leaks. The concern is that this is a catastrophe, an explosion waiting to happen. The question about storage and supply will be a moot point if there is such a catastrophe that is worse than what we experienced in October. I live in the area. At my home, birds are dropping dead in my yard. Newborn birds. One was born without a tail. Another newborn just died right after birth. If birds are being impacted this way, just consider what's happening to the human beings living in the area. I share council member Fuentes' concerns about emergency needs, and there need to be appropriate contingency plans for that. But the contingency plans should not be more dangerous or egregious than the problem they are trying to mitigate. So I urge you to support a motion that will not allow, that will shut down Eliso Canyon until it can be proven that it is entirely safe. And we have to deal in different ways. We can ask consumers to have one light on only in their homes in the room that they're in, to not put air conditioning on at night while they're sleeping, to have appliances run at night. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, do we have an Alexandra Nagy here? Alexandra? Okay. Then that concludes public comment. And again, we will note and file. This item will move now to Item 30. Ms. Ramirez on Item 30?
Item 30, a CAO report has been circulated for distribution.
Excuse me. Number 30.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I would say to Mr. Weston and Price, hell no. $232 is... Or one cent is not acceptable for the severance. Excuse me. The 30. Okay. It's too much money for services in connection with May 13, 2016, Council District 10 Special Reception for the Southwestern Law School in the City Hall of Tom Bradley, for we know all the law schools and the state bars are criminally culpable for grossly and unethical tarnishing the Los Angeles and American jurisprudence by producing incompetent, unethical, lazy-ass, unresponsive, disloyal, dishonest, criminal pandering legal hacks with no integrity who don't represent their clients zealously and with confidentiality and with good faith and fair dealings. But what we have are legal hacks who are thieves and have left a segment of the homeless population holding the bag, and that includes me. I think what we need to institute as a city or as a body is to implement ethics in all the law schools. The law schools do not teach ethics, or they teach professional responsibility.
She does not appear to be speaking on this item.
Get back on the item.
So again, ladies and gentlemen, not even a penny should do this reception. We shouldn't have to fork out not even a penny, because law schools have failed miserably in bringing out top-notch...
Thank you. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, we'll move Mr. Previn. We're going to move now to Item 31. Mr. Previn and Mr. Walsh, Item 31.
Yes, it's Eric Previn. On Item number 31, a communication from the city attorney regarding a conflict waiver for Loeb and Loeb. The city attorney has been remiss on the conflict issues. We are experiencing great difficulties in Studio City as we speak. There was wide electoral event. People were elected to office. Then there was provisional electioning that resulted in an outcome, and all the people who won were celebrating, when the local incumbent, who's been installed for almost a decade or more...
You're not on subject, Mr. Previn. Well, I may...
Conflict panel?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. And this particular person put together a grievance panel, like a conflict panel, but it's a grievance, regional grievance panel. And in that particular space, they, with nobody there to defend, it was about 20 miles away from Studio City, they overturned the election. It's an astonishing turn of events, Mr. Harris Dawson.
He's not talking about this item.
Mr. Previn, get back on the item. We gave you a little flexibility.
This is a conflict panel. I already spoke with Mr. Kretz about this. There are others who will hear about it. You can't turn your back on it, sir. And Andrew Westall is a great American, but he's...
No, you're off subject now. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. Okay, you understand, the city attorney doesn't do all the legal work. They don't have the expertise for a lot of it. So they spend tens of millions of dollars hiring private firms that are politically connected. So on this Drayage Truck Concession item, they said, "We don't know nothing about no truck concession," so they hired Loeb and Loeb. And then somebody pointed out that they have a conflict of interest. They're hooked in there. So what are we going to do? We're going to waive the conflict of interest, so Loeb and Loeb can be politically wired and do what they're told to do. How corrupt can this city be? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's move to Item 33. Ms. McAllister and Ms. Ramirez, please come forward on Item 33.
Patricia McAllister here. I object to Item 33. I'm looking here, and I see all of these contractors, but the main one I'm objecting to is the Asian American Drug Abuse Program. I object to the funding of this project, and I need to know the accounting. How much money has been spent and how much money will be spent? I see that they're getting $16,039. Now, it's called the AADAP, okay? That's the Asian Drug Abuse Program. And it's the Inglewood Municipal Court. They have combined forces to form the Inglewood Drug Court, and it is a non-adversarial team approach to treatment involving the Drug Court Commissioner, the prosecutor, and the defense attorney and AADAP treatment staff. Successful participation and completion of the program results in the dismissal of drug charges. Failure to complete the program results in the resumption of criminal proceedings and a defendant's incarceration. Now, this Asian American Drug Program, they got this $16,000, and it's discriminating against blacks. You need to take advantage of the Inglewood Drug Program. Yes, blacks need to take advantage of this. They're not Asians. Most of the Asians are illegal aliens anyway. Asians make up the second largest illegal alien population in Los Angeles and in the United States. There should not be a special program for Asians to participate in and not black people
Stick to the item.
In this municipal court. I'm on this item. These are the list of the people...
There's no discrimination here. Read it, Ms. McAllister.
Wait a minute. Are you questioning what I'm saying? You're not supposed to stop me on my comment about this. That's wrong, President. Now, I'm still on 33. This is the Asian American Drug Program. Everybody go online, because I'm going to post this on the website, and the city has not been posting my objections. They're supposed to be under this...
Thank you. Okay, so where's Ms. Ramirez? Ms. Ramirez, you have one minute left.
Thank you. $433,000 is a lot of money. Here we go again, subsidizing chungo Latino wetbacks and gangbangers. And here we are, Solidad Enrichment Action Incorporated, New Direction for Youth, Youth Policy Institute, Child and Family Guidance, El Centro del Pueblo, and Brotherhood Crusade. Now, have all these organizations and incorporations help these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers stay away from crimes in Los Angeles? Hell, no! I sleep on the streets. I get vandalized and robbed every fucking night. Tell me, what program here works? Tell me! Not one goddamn program works, because you can't keep them off the streets. Every now and then, you'll get a good officer who will make a lawful arrest. God bless Ivanka and Johnson. But not every day do you get a good officer or good councilman who stands up for the rule of law. And again, you are subsidizing these goddamn wetbacks when you can't even put a goddamn toilet out there for us 24/7. How dare you do your goddamn job and deport these goddamn wetbacks?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to get up and comment in a positive way about Asian American Drug Abuse Program in particular, but all of the programs, including Solidad Enrichment Program. All of these programs provide services to everybody who lives in the various zones. So Asian American Drug Abuse Program has been a part of the Crenshaw District all my life and before that, and SEIA and Brotherhood Crusade and all the rest. And so they provide great services. They provide them to everybody. They employ every... People from every racial group, and they are a great and important part of our drug and crime prevention strategy.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us to Item 34, where I have Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, Item 34. Okay, Mr. Walsh passes. Let's vote on 34. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And on Item 33, forthwith, let's now move to Item 36. Mr. Previn, Item 36.
Yes, it's Eric Previn on Item 36. Up in the Tom Bradley Tower, last week, we were celebrating with one group. This week, we're celebrating with the folks from Southwestern Law School, which, as you know, is a local law school that gets a lot of people who wind up in the city attorney and the county council go to this law school. They do good municipal training and such. One substantial problem is in this building. The city attorney's office is badly corrupted. There's a guy named Darren Martinez who does not do his job. He has been concocting...
Stay on the subject.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's a graduate of this particular law school. It's a nice law school. They have a Millennium Momentum Foundation who's helping with this, sir. They're a good group. But I am very, very disappointed in the flagrant, I think is the best way to describe, the kind of extralegal behavior that has been perpetuated...
Mr. City Attorney, I believe Mr. Previn's off.
Well, I disagree, sir. I mean, I'm entitled to...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's now move to Item 38. Do we have Mr. Mohammed? Oscar Mohammed? And Ms. McAllister, you have a minute?
America political leadership is in crisis. The political system of America is broke. We should find a way to amend something to uplift this fallen humanity. We should take the wealth from the unrighteous and put the wealth in hand of the righteous. We should end the homeless downtown Skid Row. We need accountability among leadership. We should stop the sales of alcohol in Los Angeles. All the stores, liquor stores in Los Angeles should be closed.
He is not talking about this item.
We should end police brutality. But the two largest religion in America is Christianity, is number one, and the second largest religion is Al-Islam in the African-American community.
Mr. President, he's still not talking about Item 38.
And the leader of the Islam religion in North America is Imam Waiz D. Muhammad. Maybe we should try to find a way to turn to the Creator.
Ms. McAllister?
You negro slid this behind me. We... I always spoke against these illegal aliens getting this affordable housing, and what you did was you advertised in the New York Times that you were holding a meeting for the public, a one-day time... A meeting for the public to come in and speak about all of these housing units you're getting ready to build in these different wards. Most of them are going to illegal aliens, and you put it in there one day, and then you wrote, "We followed the law, and nobody showed up to speak, so we got it." You low-down, no-good scoundrels. You were supposed to publish this on the website, just like you do every other meeting you have, all these committee meetings. Who reads the LA Times? It's about to go out of business. You low-down scoundrels. Now, you're going to build all this housing for illegals. I pray that I be alive when all you negroes go to prison.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Forthwith? Okay.
Mr. President, can I give you an announcement, sir?
Oh, no, I've got another item. But why don't you go ahead, Mr. Buscagino, with your announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, happy to welcome...
Quickly, happy to welcome to the John Farrow Chambers Winter Women in Non-Traditional Employment Roles Program, steered toward at-risk youth, who give second chances to those who have either dropped out of high school or trade school. And really pleased to welcome you under the direction of Alberto Ramirez from Wilmington and Luis Flores. And they're here with Gabby Medina, showing them City Hall. So, we welcome you. We love you, and we're so proud of your commitment to education and a commitment to your community as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, so why don't we go now to item two? Do I have a Scott Pearson, Cindy Starrett, George Abrams, Fabio Conti? Thor Lee, just come on? Can we do a minute on this? All right, that's what we do. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Cindy Starrett from Latham and Watkins. Here on behalf of the Hollywood Palladium Project. The council approved this project on March twenty-second, and we're back here solely because the finding of public convenience and necessity also needs a finding by the council. Our project is a mixed-use project next to the historic Palladium. Councilman O'Farrell and the council itself had a number of public hearings on this project. We're preserving the Palladium. We have an affordable element. It's a mixed-use project that includes retail, pedestrian amenities, to really encourage activity around the project. Part of that is a store that will sell alcohol for off-site consumption, and we hope that our residents will be able to use that store and entertain their friends. The pedestrian activity, the use of transit, the incorporation of bicycles, all the city's principles for mixed-use projects are reflected in the Hollywood Palladium Project. We have a tremendous amount of support. Some of our supporters had to leave, including Mr. Pearson, but we look forward to the council's action, and we appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Okay, so who else do I have out there? Mr. Abraham, Mr. Conti, Mr. Lee, Mr. David Warren, Mr. Hefler, Brandon Helfer. Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, George Abraham. Businesses are trying to turn our residential Hollywood community into Alcohol Hollywood. We are forced to oppose them in order to maintain our family-oriented lifestyle. An undue concentration of liquor licenses is corrosive to our community. The Planning Department always has the rationalization for more liquor licenses, that the public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance. But they never explain why the maximum number of licenses allowable under state law is already not convenient or necessary enough. Every nearby census tract is at maximum or oversaturated. Hollywood is drowning in alcohol.
Okay, if I could have the next speaker. And again, I'm looking for Mr. Lee, Mr. Helfer, Mr. Warren, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Crossner, Elliot Kahn. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, and hello to the council. My name is David Warren. I am the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Hollywood Arts Council. We've been working for a vibrant community for nearly forty years in Hollywood. We're a small nonprofit. And on behalf of my fellow stakeholders who submitted speaker slips but had to leave, Fabio Conti from Sunset and Vine Bid, Thor Lee, Eberson and Young, Brandon Helfer from Proper Parking, Nicole Shaheenian from the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, all of us support the Palladium Project. The Palladium is known across the globe for its history as an outstanding venue. A project which includes this gem as a centerpiece is novel and will benefit the community. More rental units are needed in the area. A mixed-use development that plans retail and encourages walking and public transportation is much needed. It is a premier arts and entertainment venue, and it's going to bring jobs to the community. So, we urge your support. Thank you.
Go on, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, book and wall brought jobs to the community also. Good-paying union jobs. Okay, sixty-two ten Selma Avenue and sixty-two oh-one Sunset Boulevard. We have two more liquor licenses in Hollywood. We need that like a hole in the head. And then it says here in the agenda, "We'll not tend to create a law enforcement problem." Says who? Says the LAPD? Let them have their blue asses up here and say it isn't. Alcohol Hollywood. The city is, Hollywood is choking in alcohol. Drunk driving, and I'm telling you right now, the blood of the people hit-and-run, this is the hit-and-run capital of the United States, is on your hands, and Mr. Krikorian is laughing. He thinks it's funny, you scumbag. HollywoodHighlands.org. Alcoholism. Seek alcoholism.
Okay, so again, Ms. Heather Crossner, Mr. Lee, Elliot Kahn, Nicole Shaheenian, Alexandra Wayman, Daniel Wright, here, identify yourself, please.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Heather Crossner from Latham and Watkins, speaking on behalf of CH Palladium. We are pleased to be back before you today in the Palladium, which you approved back on March twenty-second. Today, we return for the purpose of approving Caldera findings for the project's off-site alcohol sales. The project includes the option for a community-serving boutique wine and food store, which would allow the sale of alcohol for takeaway. This would be operated pursuant to the project's extensive security features, which are included as conditions of approval and mitigation measures for the project. These include surveillance cameras and twenty-four-hour onsite security. CH Palladium also has a very good working relationship with local LAPD and is required to consult with police on security plans for the project. This use will be well-suited to the neighborhood with its large number of new multifamily residential units in need of local serving retail. There are no single-family homes adjacent to the project site. As Elliot Kahn will talk about next, CH Palladium also has extensive experience operating this type of mixed-use development. We ask you to approve the requested findings today, and welcome any questions. Thank you.
Okay, please come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Elliot Kahn, speaking on behalf of Palladium Residences. Good afternoon, honorable council members. My company actually has its roots here in Los Angeles, and we have since over thirty years of experience delivering and operating high-quality mixed-use projects that incorporate neighborhood-serving retail and alcohol sales. As such, we're uniquely capable of maintaining orderly and safe operations that fit within the fabric of this emerging neighborhood in Hollywood. Our commitment to safety is paramount, and that is evident from a record of operating alcohol-serving retail establishments without incident for years. We work hand-in-hand with the LAPD on all of our projects, including the current historic Palladium Venue, to ensure it operates at its fullest and safest capacities. And we plan to continue that relationship as we move forward with our project. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, again, come forward and identify yourself, please.
Good afternoon, honorable city council members. My name is Alexandra Wayman. I'm a research analyst with Unite Here Local Eleven. I am here to stand in strong support of the Palladium Residences. Los Angeles is experiencing a wave of new development, and we need good, responsible development. We commend the developer for creating a quality project that is good for workers and residents in the Los Angeles community. We believe that this project serves as a model for future projects, and we look forward to this project moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, before you come up, do I have a Thor Lee? Brandon Helfer? Nicole Shaheenian? Doug? Doug, I see you in the back to my left. Doug Haynes, come on up. Chelsea Byers, young man, what's your name?
Marcus.
Oh, Marcus Harrell. Come on.
So, hello.
Go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of Chelsea and Jessica, who had to leave. I wanted to say that I do full hundred, one-hundred percent fully support the Palladium Residences. And I also think that the alcohol bill should be passed, because just like everything else in Hollywood, you know, it's a place of mingle. It's a new place for tourists to be. Also, that's a historic location. So, without the alcohol and the music and all, it gives that vibe. So, I very much so support it. Also, like the restaurants across that street, there's no issue with them selling the alcohol as well. So, I don't see why there would be an extra issue with that. But thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. Doug Hayes? Do we have another Alexandra, last name with an S? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name's Doug Haynes, and thank you for allowing us two minutes to speak on this item. This location for what is essentially a liquor superstore doesn't have an operator, is years away from construction, and hasn't had any LAPD input whatsoever. It is in a census tract where five alcohol licenses are permitted, but thirty-three already exist. It is in a crime-reporting district that is not only five-hundred-and-forty-seven percent higher than the citywide average, and they didn't include the Part I crimes when they did the analysis in the application, but has actually seen crime rates nearly double between 2010 and 2014, when almost every other reporting district had a decline in crime. Across Sunset Boulevard from this site, the census tract is permitted to have three alcohol licenses, yet fifteen already exist. Across Vine Street from the project site, the census tract is permitted to have five alcohol licenses, when fifty-nine already exist. The census tract at Hollywood and Vine is permitted to have three alcohol licenses, when twenty-four already exist. LAPD Hollywood Division has three-hundred-and-fourteen officers that cover an area of seventeen-point-two square miles. The National Association of City Managers and Police Department standard is four sworn officers per one-thousand residents, which means that Hollywood alone, with a population of one-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand people, requires seven-hundred-and-ninety-two officers, or four-hundred-and-seventy-eight more officers than the entire division currently has. That number doesn't even factor in the ten million tourists who visit Hollywood every year. In 2015, then CD thirteen Planning Director Marie Rumsey publicly stated that in Hollywood, quote, "There is no need for an additional convenience market to dispense alcohol," unquote. Her remarks came in response to requests to sell a full line of alcohol at a 7-Eleven store located two blocks from here. Alcohol is the third-leading cause of preventable death in the United States and causes twenty-five-hundred deaths in L.A. County each year. As Marie said last year for CD thirteen, Councilman O'Farrell, Hollywood doesn't need another convenience store for liquor. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mohammed, are you still here? Oscar Mohammed?
Sir, is there anyone that I missed that had time left to speak on this subject? Oscar, come on up. Sir, you want to speak? Did you fill out a card? Well, come on. Okay. Yes, but alcohol should be prohibited in Los Angeles, California, because there are a lot of teenagers in the African-American drinking alcohol. Alcohol causes too much drunk driving. And anyway, alcohol contributes to sugar, diabetes, when they, you know, overexcess alcohol. We should have stiffer penalties with drunk driving, because I remember many times on TV when a vehicle homicides and someone involving the alcohol seem to have a very light sentence penalty that's involved. Yeah, but yeah, we should have, find a way to educate America people today. But anyway, though, in the religion of Islam in the near future, I hope that anyone that's in the, in the near future, in the religion of Islam, anyone come before the congregation and mislead the people should be put to death.
Okay, and I apologize for calling other people in front of you, and I do apologize for that.
Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm, on behalf of AIDS Healthcare Foundation. The item before you is a determination of whether or not a proposed liquor store opened from eleven a.m. to two a.m. as part of the proposed Palladium Residences project is in the public interest and convenience despite a massive over-concentration of off-site and onsite alcohol licenses in the area and a census tract with a crime rate more than four-hundred, I'm sorry, five-hundred-and-forty-seven percent of the city's average. There's just no need for this project to sell a full line of liquor next to the exit doors of the Palladium nightclub. A detail, as detailed in our objection letter, which we filed with the clerk this morning at eight, at nine-twenty-seven, the decision you are considering is a discretionary determination, and therefore, you must comply with SEQA. But the agenda does not disclose that you are relying on any SEQA document in support of your decision. The proposed findings you were requested to adopt are direct quotations from the Palladium Project's draft EIR. The agenda item fails to list a supporting environmental document or a proposal to adopt an environmental document. The failure to list the environmental clearance document that you are quoting extensively without placing on your meeting agenda violates both Public Resources Code Section 21080 and the SEQA Guidelines 15357 and the Brown Act. This entitlement has been improperly piecemealed from the entitlements of the entire project, as admitted by the representatives of the project here. The draft EIR for the project failed to properly analyze the massive over-concentration of alcohol licenses in this neighborhood, and this is a failure to proceed in accordance with law. In sum, you were about to violate SEQA, the Brown Act, and you have no basis to make the finding. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card that I have on this item. Let us prepare then to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Items twelve and twenty-nine.
Mr. Corretti, you want to go to item twelve?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask DWP staff, if they're still here, to come up and address a couple of questions. Before I start, I just want to say that we've been doing a lot to reduce water usage as a city, and I have to admit, I was pretty horrified in November to read the L.A. Times report that several of the top residential users in the state live in my district, including one in Bel Air, who was actually using around a million gallons of water a month. I've had constituents say that they were flushing their toilets once a day, that they were showering with buckets and dumping it on their lawns, or ripping out their lawns, or browning their lawns. And then to hear this, and I don't think we can allow a disparity between rich and poor in terms of water use, and that water shouldn't become a commodity only for the very rich. So, when we, when we actually implemented some of this, I think what we found was the majority of water users weren't even aware of what they were doing. They had people to pay their bills and pay their water bill, and they had gardeners that were charged with making their lawns look good. And I'm not sure that connection was made. So, as I understand it, we've worked with a large number of these water abusers doing water audits and smart metering, and we've helped them find where they were committing these atrocities in terms of massive water use, and we've helped them dramatically reduce. And so, I want to get a sense of where we are on this. How much water have we saved? How many people have we worked with successfully? Where's this all gone?
Thank you, Marty Adams from Water and Power, the Water System. I have Penny Falcon and Dave Pettijohn with me. We've had a lot of outreach efforts since your motion to try to address these high-water users, and I would like to say that we've had some pretty good success. We did have another second round of outreach to our top customers, our top one percent of water users, and we heard back from a lot of folks. We actually did a sampling in that, in that group of people, and we see about a twenty to thirty percent savings right now amongst the highest water users on average. We also looked at the top one-hundred water users, and since your motion, they are saving right now an average of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand gallons of water a day in, as a group. In addition to that, we also had the results come from our first, called the Water Smart Audit, which was twenty-thousand random customers throughout the city that received feedback, which I think was a lacking component, that customers didn't realize how much water they're using. So, they received feedback, and after the year pilot, we got the results back that those twenty-thousand customers reduced their water demand by four-point-six percent. So, that's three-hundred-thousand gallons of water a day. And at this time, we now have added another fifty-plus-thousand to that group. So, about one-sixth of our customers do receive feedback, and we're looking to roll that out citywide as quickly as possible. So, I would say, Councilman, that as a, as a result of the emphasis on this, we've had some, some great results. some, some great results. Information is key, and they say knowledge is power, and I think we're seeing that in this case, where people are really taking it to heart once we bring out their water use, bring it to their attention, and we are seeing that result. And again, we continue to see that per capita water use in the city go down month after month, and so we see as collectively as a city, we are achieving our goals.
If we had many of the large users that have gotten that instruction, been pointed out how much they were using, figured out where their use was, and said, hell with you, we're not going to do it anyway, and just continued to maintain their water use.
Fortunately, we haven't had that response yet. We have had, we've been on property with the highest water customer, and their water use is down considerably. We've placed smart meters strategically where we needed to get better eyes on what was going on, but, but we have not had a situation yet where somebody wouldn't comply. However, with the drought conservation ordinance, that was item number six today, that will actually give us a tool to address high-water users who don't want to comply with the city's ordinances, and it'll give us a way to bring it to their attention and also to charge penalties if they don't comply in the future. But so far, we've been very fortunate that we've had great success with the outreach programs and a good response from the public.
So I think that was the source of some of the anger, including my own. I assumed that all these people knew they were wasting massive amounts of water and didn't care. Probably the person spending, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on, on their water bill would have wanted to reduce the dollar amount, too, but probably just didn't realize that that was happening and wasn't the one tracking their, their household expenses.
Yeah, I think you're correct. And you know, water is still one of the cheapest commodities you have at the, at the house. And so just April 15th, last Friday, our, our new four-tier structure went into place. So between having the higher prices for the Tier Four water and then all the awareness issues, I think hopefully we'll continue to see changes in behavior.
Well, I thank you all for your good work on this, and please come back to us every once in a while with an update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare the vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Rue, were you on the?
I just wanted to rise in support of Councilmember Coretts, and thank you.
Well, here, let me reconsideration. Let's open, you sure?
I'm okay, I'm okay.
All right. Okay, let's move on to the last item. Madam Clerk is what?
Item 29, and a motion 29A has been circulated for consideration.
Okay, let's deal with item 29. We want to go. So, Mr. Sadio, you circulated the, this motion, so I guess we start with you, and then I So we have cards. I want to take the cards. Mr. Walsh, does he have time? Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Previn.
The emotion, the amending motion, I can't find it on, on the bulletin board. It has to be there, Mr. City Attorney. We have to know what the amending motion is. Okay, let's start with 29A. This is a travel ban. We are all for this. Why is there a travel ban in Arizona? It's a homophobic state. It doesn't allow gender-neutral bathrooms. Now, LA allows it. We have a gay mayor, a bisexual mayor, Glenn, ask Glenn Dake. But in any case, wait a second. This building is totally homophobic. There isn't a
Let's stay on the subject.
The subject is the staff's going, not going to Arizona because it's homophobic, and I'm saying that there's not a single bathroom here that is gender-neutral. We are just as bad. We should not send anybody
He is not talking about this item. Get on the subject, Mr. Walsh.
This is 29. Currently, and you haven't even given me the agenda amendment. The Department of Building and Safety is supposed to be going there. Why? To check quality control of businesses that are doing business with us that don't have valid licenses. It says it right here in the agenda. If they don't have valid licenses, to hell with them. I just want you to know that this place is just as homophobic, this building, as the entire state.
Thank you, you're off the subject. So if we could have Mr. Previn or Mr. City Attorney?
I've confirmed with the CLA that the amending motion was on the bulletin board.
Okay, so Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn has a minute?
Yes, does Mr. Previn only have one minute, sir?
That's what I was just informed.
That's all I'll need for this one, sir. Arizona is an interesting state in the Southwest, and they have a number of companies, some of whom are working closely with our Department of Building Safety, providing fabricators and such. Others produce tasers and body cam video machines. We've had a ban in place, thanks to supervisor to be Mr. Sadio. As you know, Mr. Sadio is going to be a supervisor one day with, with the help of all of you. He's a very, very bold leader. Arizona has been offensive to various members of ethnic groups, like Mr. Bonham was pointing out last week. North Carolina, we have a ban. But Mr. Englander flew down to Arizona to get 12 donations from TASER during a procurement for body cam videos, which all resulted in various articles, and yet the Ethics Commission needs to take a front seat and admonish him and punish him and make him return that money to TASER International, believe it or not. And then we have to have a fair RFP for all that stuff.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Sadio.
Members, this is a very simple matter. We want to conform our practices with our reality. Six years ago, almost to the date when SB 1070 was introduced or signed by then-Governor Janet Brewer, I, as the head of the Latino Caucus, called for a boycott of Arizona, and the state of California called for a boycott of Arizona. This city did something comparable, but not a full boycott. What the city did is call for a boycott and then created every type of exemption that we could have, so that the city could continue to do its business with the state of Arizona. In the courts, we won. And when we won in the courts, I called off the boycott from my position in Sacramento. I've come to this city and recognize that we have this so-called boycott, but in fact, we continue to have the exemptions and utilize the exemptions in the best interests of the city. I'm not offended by that. What I find offensive or unnecessary is for us to pretend that we have a boycott when in fact we have never voted no against any exemption. So given that we have business to do with Arizona, important business, given that we were successful on SB 1070, given that the point of boycotts is to utilize them strategically and tactically at the period of times when you're trying to influence decisions, and that period has passed, I see no reason for us to continue with this folly. But I think it's just dishonest. I think it's a farce. I don't think that represents any moral or political integrity on our part. And so I'm simply saying, let's reconcile our reality with the realities that exist around us, and let's vote, one, for this exemption, and, two, to end this policy so that in another instance, for example, should the state pass new laws that are draconian and difficult for immigrants to live in that state, we could reinstitute a boycott. That would be more appropriate, but we can't do so if we continue on with this, with this policy that really has no effect, neither force nor effect. And I think the city is too serious about its business matters, too serious about where it stands with the immigrant community to engage in this folly any longer, and therefore I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, the issues that Mr. Sadio brought up merit some discussion. Is this boycott working? Is it not? What is happening in Arizona? How many exemptions have we made? Does that work? Does that not work? But the way this is going about is just an unacceptable way to maneuver on a very significant policy that set a trend for the rest of the country. I would hate that we come and put in an amendment to another item in the future and say, let's repeal the item we just did last week in North Carolina and Mississippi on their terrible laws on LGBT, on the LGBT community. To do that so swiftly and so quickly without a discussion, without facts, you know, what's going on in Arizona? Just, they just introduced in February, a new item that will ask and will limit the ability of cities to issue an ID card for residents. We, as a city, are moving in the opposite direction of that. Sheriff Arpaio is up for reelection in November after he has created a hostile environment and implemented racist policies in the Sheriff's Department that has resulted in 74, over $74 million of lawsuits on that Sheriff's Department. There's a lot going on that we need to get the facts on the table. Is it working? Is it not? How can we fix it if there are concerns about how many exemptions we're making? And then let's, let's move on from there. But to do it so swiftly and so quickly, an amendment to this, the public deserves a discussion, we deserve a discussion, and committee, council members ask that we send this to committee and have that discussion. Thank you.
Okay, before I speak on it, Mr. City Attorney, I said, can I just go? Mr. Sadio, as the chairman of the committee that would oversee this, I'd like to request that it be sent back to my committee and promise you prompt action. I was here in 2010, and it took a lot of work to put this in place, and I do want to give it the kind of hearing that it deserves before we were to eliminate that. The reason why it was waived is because I think action needed to be taken within a few weeks so that whatever Department, General Service, or whatever could go to Arizona. I can't, I'm just having a senior moment at the moment as to which entity needed to go. And, and what would you say? Building and Safety. Had I known at that point, then I would have had a more, I would have had a robust conversation in, in committee. So that would be my request as the chair, that this be referred back to committee so that I could properly look into it. But before that, I do have Mr. Fuentes on the cue, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Wes, and, you know, respecting your chairmanship, I, I would defer to you if, if the amendment should go there, but I think that we should be conscious of the original motion. It is time-sensitive. There is work that Building and Safety needs to verify in the steel industry to make sure that we don't delay projects here in Mr. Weezer's district. In fact, it's downtown skyscrapers in particular that they're procuring the steel for. So if it would be okay as a second of the motion, I'd ask the maker of the motion, maybe we withdraw it and have the conversation there, but if we could somehow vote on this exception, I think that would be a reasonable compromise if it were amenable to my colleagues.
Well, you know, that's probably my mistake. I did not articulate it exactly the way that I would want. I think it would be important that we take action on this issue. But I'm asking, before we get to that point, to send this amendment back to the committee, and then I was going to call for a vote. So again, Mr. Sadio, it is, it is your call.
Well, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, you know I never say no to you, and so I'm not going to do that now, even though we've never said no to any request for an exemption. That's a fact. Even though the law has been overturned, that's a fact. Even though that we continue to do and must do important business for the city, I'm not going to be here to stand in the way of our developments and growth, neither in downtown or any part of the city. In fact, I'm, would move so with great, with great haste that we continue to move the growth. As you know, I've been on, in discussion with you about the need for us to move other aspects of our House L.A. initiative. I think those things should also be moved with all due haste as well. And so if you're, if this is your request, if there's a time definite and certain, I'm happy to, to comply with your leadership, sir.
Okay, and thank you. And again, let me just restate that your amendment has a lot of merit. And if we're going to do something, we should do something that is real. And it was a very challenging action that we took six years ago. So, Mr. Coretts, what's, what we're going to do now if, if, is have this portion sent back to the Rules Committee and vote on the other, the actual exemption. So are you fine with that? Can we move forward with that, or do you need?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly supported it when we took this action six years ago or so. I think this action makes Mr. Sadio's point, however, that we constantly exempt this. So while we did it, it was somewhat symbolic, and I appreciate the symbolism, but the reality is we keep exempting our doing business with Arizona, and I think we should either declare victory and go home or stop doing these exemptions. And despite the fact that I think there's a good city reason for it, I'm going to vote against this specific exemption because of that and future exemptions as well.
And that's the kind of vigorous conversation that we will have in Rules Committee, because if we don't need this, if we're not going to adhere to it, then we need to have a conversation about doing something that's real and not symbolic. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. So if Councilmember Sadio's motion is going to go back to committee and we're going to vote on the item today, I did have a question for LADBS. Are they here?
Please come on down.
And as Councilman Coretts and Councilman Sadio stated about the urgency of the being considered in your committee, because I believe, and I started asking the question, but because of this motion, I stopped asking, but even there's other things on our docket like TASER, who's also from Arizona as well. So that, I, I think they're exempt because we had business with them before, but
Have a seat, sir.
Yeah. But the question I have for DBS was, I don't know, it's my understanding, I just want to double-check. We've made administrative decisions to create a more stringent certification processes for the fabricators and manufacturers that the city, as well as our private contractors, do business with than the state and the federal guidelines that's, that's required. Is that the case and why?
Good afternoon. Todd Borsey, Chief Building Inspector, Department of Building and Safety. I don't think it's different. What the current code requires is that if you are fabricating something offsite that would other, would require inspection, we grant the authority by virtue of a fabricator approval to do it offsite, so you can fabricate.
No, so, I mean, the question is, let me just clarify, that only the city of LA requires an extra certification than anybody else?
No. It's just we are one of the, we are the only jurisdiction that we're aware of that has our own certification. We've probably, the department's probably been doing this for 40 years that I'm, I'm aware of, and other jurisdictions recognize our approval. There are other approvals out there. Currently, our code provides for only our certification, and other jurisdictions honor it.
So are there other, other cities that have separate certification processes?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we're the only one?
That I'm familiar with.
Right. So city of LA is the only one that has this extra step?
It's not extra, it's parallel. It's parallel to what would be required anywhere, but you can go through other certification processes through the International Code Council or other recognized agency that do a quality control type of approval, as long as the jurisdiction recognizes that and puts it into their building code.
So you're saying a company could get certified through the state, the feds, or the city? They have a choice?
No, it's not, it's not a governmental agency. The ICC is, is the Code, International Code Council, and there are, they have an accreditation program that's parallel to their, their code programs. It's a service that they provide.
Okay. So if, if the same business in Arizona wanted to do business with Compton, they don't have to be certified by to be certified by them, but if they want to do business with us, they have to be?
I don't know what Compton's code specifically reads, I'm probably sure they probably utilize the International Code Council codes as well, and they would have to use a fabricator that's recognized by them. In that case, it would probably be the IAS International.
So can you help me understand why we have that, why we have a different certification process? Is there something?
Those, their accreditation and approval process is actually fairly new to what we've been doing for many, many years. We were the first to do it, and so we always felt our program to be superior, quite frankly. This body entertained going that way, I think, in the mid-'90s and chose not to at that point because the International Code Council made presentation. We're working with them now, trying to become international and more uniform code. We've asked them to make a proposal in our testing agency program, kind of as a primer, if you will, to see how it works out, and we're waiting for their proposal to verify that their quality control procedures and what they have to offer meets our standards. Not everybody across the country, their codes are so stringent, us being seismic zone four, we're much more sensitive to the quality control procedures throughout.
So you're saying our codes are more stringent, more safer, there's a reason why we do it differently than everyone else?
Not differently, I think it's just, it's more checks, checks and balances, in that you still have options in other jurisdictions. Los Angeles has maintained this because, yes, we believe it's superior.
Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually, Mr. Rue, thank you for bringing up the conversation. It's a very complicated reason why Building and Safety has to go out to Arizona. We have building codes and standards, and they are predicated upon accreditation, and only certain entities are able to accredit building supplies and products so that we can then go ahead and list the use of Building and Safety's approval of those products. Building and Safety is uniquely situated because the city of Los Angeles is recognized in state code as one of those entities, just like ICC. Remind me what it stands for?
International Code Council.
International Code Council. The State Department of Architecture, and there's a conversation, and I don't remember in which committee this is taking place. In Plum, Mr. Weezer, where there is an opportunity to have other entities that actually subcontract with ICC for similar accreditation. So if we had a bigger pool of folks that can verify building codes and standards of materials, then we may not find ourselves in the same situation that we're in today. So in Plum, Mr. Weezer, this is a very good conversation, and we should really contemplate how we expand the universe of folks that actually do this service. So, thank you, Mr. Englander, for bringing that motion in. So in this particular case, the reason that we've got to go to Arizona is because these professionals are the ones that can give us the accreditation, because we've got such a limited group of people that are allowed under code to do that today.
Okay, Mr. Harris Dawson, then, Mr. Rue.
So I will acknowledge my confusion here. We're going to Arizona, we're proposing to go to Arizona to accredit some work, to certify some work that's being done by an Arizona business.
Correct.
And the idea, when we say we're going to stop doing business with the state, is that we not do business with that state. That's another question for you, sorry. So, but, it is an Arizona company that we're going to work with?
Currently, we have 36 fabricators in the state of Arizona that are currently licensed. We're holding six applications, new applications in abeyance.
So, so 36 of these businesses, are there any businesses that do fabrication, to use your term, anywhere else in the United States?
I'm sorry, can you?
Are there any other businesses that do fabrication of the sort that we're proposing to go check out in the United States?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, for helping clarify, and I think you hit the nail on the head. And I think you were saying earlier how you're looking, working with the international standards to see how they could possibly change so we could accept that. But it is my understanding that the city of L.A. only accepts our certification.
That's correct. That's the way the current code is structured.
Right. So, like the councilmember Fuentes has said, it would be great if we were able to expand that pool so that, and, because right now, from my understanding, city of L.A.'s the only jurisdiction that has their own certification.
That's correct.
Nobody else in the nation does it, except for us. Everybody else follows the international standards, or, you know, the processes that are more uniform, but ours, we do it independently, and in order to do business with us, you can't do any other procedure, just to make it more confusing, Councilmember Dawson, you can't use any other procedures, but you have to go through ours. So I just find that, I mean, you know, I'd like to learn more about it offline, why, you know, if you're telling us it's more safe, then great, and I hope the other, the international standards adopts our policy, so we don't have to be unique in the nation.
We believe it to be safer at this point in time. That's why we're waiting for their proposal, eagerly waiting their proposal to see that they can maintain these standards and continue with a parallel program to give people options.
Mr. Englander.
Not that we're on this subject, but I guess there's enough of a nexus, so I, yes, we're on this subject, and I'm glad we're here. So on this, we're no safer by using our own labs and certifications. Maybe we were 30 or 40 years ago, and it's not those who only do business in the city, it's those with the city. It's those who build anything, private homes, anything. Yet, OSHPOD, the State Architect, oh, those are the two agencies that oversee the building of hospitals and schools, allow organizations like UL and others for certification, we don't. It's draconian, it's archaic, and I think we've come up with, hopefully, maybe a balance to figure out how to get there. This has been sort of stuck in the mud for a long time, where we have to actually travel, it's not just Arizona where it exemptions, but we have to spend so much time and effort, resources and dollars, and personnel, chasing down these certifications with our own labs, when there are proven independent third-party labs that are allowed under OSHPOD and the State Architect that allow these. So I think the world and the space has changed dramatically, which is why I brought the motion in some two years ago. I think it's changed a lot since then, too, and we've hopefully come up with a process where we can move this, but probably detracting a little bit from Councilmember Sadio's motion, just a little. I think it's a great day for Deon to be asleep, and so with that, though, I think we welcome that discussion in Plum. Thank you.
Okay, so the amendment, we will refer to committee, and now we'll vote actually on this issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, five noes.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, do we have any further business?
General public comment.
All right. We have a number of speakers for general public comment. I will start with Patricia McAllister, followed by Eric Previn and Jose Martinez.
Patricia McAllister here. I'd like to disagree with Harris Dawson. As you probably know, I'm a teacher. I not only taught for LAUSD, I taught in the camps, so I worked with the county also. I've been to juvenile camps like Kilpatrick, Eastlake, Kirby, you name it. See, some of you don't even have the guts to go where I was teaching. If you saw an Asian kid in there, it was unusual. Black kids are not getting these, this money, it wouldn't be $16,000 if they were. So quit lying, okay? You got black and Hispanic in those camps who are locked up in many for drug charges. They don't get this service, and I'm going to look into this and fight for this for our kids, too. So quit lying and taking it from white folks. I was in a bathroom, I was in the library in Hollywood, went to the bathroom, opened the door, a man was standing in the mirror with men's clothes on. He said, "I'm transgender, ma'am." I said, "The hell you are." I walked out and got the staff, he laughed and looked at me and said, "B, I'll cut you." And he had a knife, and I jumped back. Don't put those freaks in our bathroom, get them their own bathroom so they can go and jerk off with each other.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, followed by Jose Martinez, followed by Zuma Dog.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD2, and I'm very disappointed to report that the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and the city clerk elections, who have teamed up to provide elections for neighborhood councils, have sort of gone a little off the rails. Last night, 20 miles from Studio City, a group of incumbents who lost in two counts, first the vote count and then the provisional vote count, conducted a strange kind of challenge that's new, called the grievance panel or something, and they have tried to overturn the two leaders who were elected into office and restore this incumbent. It is, her name is Lisa Sarkin, she has been, they've tried to recall her multiple times, she always finds a way, and that's what we're experiencing here, and it's Councilmember Krikorian who needs to take some leadership here. It will never stand, this is the group, you've heard me grieve about Richard Weintraub and Harvard Westlake, and the really influential parties who have worked with this person at the expense of the community and the benefit that all of us are entitled to.
Jose Martinez, followed by Zuma Dog, followed by John Walsh.
Now, before Zuma Dog, I heard, Wes, and I'd just like to say, Councilmember Rue, what is it about we'll do this in committee? Don't you understand? Do I have to break this down for you? We have to have Fuentes and Sadio send their mafia corruption thugs to Arizona to pick up a piece of the papa city hall? Get that through your head. Okay, thank you. Now with Zuma Dog, ready for public comment. I'd like to weigh in on Mike Bonin's plan to address homelessness in Venice Beach. I'd like to say I support this first-step measure, and I'd like to address, and I'll be addressing him today at the Neighborhood Council Commission, this guy, Mark Rayavec. The guy's living in Fantasyland, okay? Congratulations, Mike. He wants to have the homeless services in industrial zone. Now, is Rayavec going to shuttle people back and forth for free with their belongings to this industrial zone? He's running around saying it's going to be in a residential neighborhood. Let me tell you something, the senior center, Venice Beach, it's not a residential area, it is a municipal, it's got businesses, restaurants, it's not residential.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Mr. Walsh, followed by Leonard Arnone, followed by Crystal Warrior and Marcus Warrior.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This entire building does not have a single gender-neutral bathroom, and you claim to be gay leaders. You claim to be leading America. We need, if we don't get one, we're going to have a pee-in. We're going to have transsexuals come down here and use this bathroom right here off the city council's main room here. Anybody but Englander for supervisor. Anybody but Englander. And people thought I was making it up. Recall Krikorian? That's no joke. Google it and sign it and move it around. And I want the opening of the first gender-neutral bathroom in City Hall to be provided over by Mayor Garcetti and his gay lover Glenn Dake, who we appointed to the MWD, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Leonard Arnone, followed by Crystal Warrior and Marcus Warrior. Don't see anybody here. Oscar Mohammed, followed by Ms. Ramirez.
America would be a much better land to live in if we can follow the constitution that was sworn up here. Political service is supposed to be a servant, serve the people. But anyway, the majority of the dog people in Los Angeles, they're not American citizens, and they're up and down Crenshaw in my way every day. I'm trying to find a way to accelerate around what's going on today in Los Angeles, these illegal immigrants that come to the Crenshaw community. They don't go to Santa Monica community, the Culver City community, they go to the niggers community around the niggers. But anyway, political leadership is being destroyed, though. Political leadership is being destroyed, we're living at the end of this. But anyway, we should end the black exploitation on Skippa with the homelessness. We should have more affordable houses today, especially for the black female in Christianity relationship, religion, I feel sorry for.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, and then there's another card, sort of illegible, but it has a 315 area code phone number.
Bravo, bravo, Sheriff Joe Arpaio and Jan Brewer of Arizona. Thank you. Let us vote for Donald Trump, el jefe. He will not cheapen America, but re-energize and make her a sustainable, patriotic, thriving, money-making machine of tangible and substantive, long-lasting industries that will rehire Americans. His priority will be safety, protection, and privacy of all legal, law-abiding citizens, and he vehemently will safeguard the U.S. democratic national sovereignty from its domestic terrorists and international enemy combatants. Thus, he will brilliantly start massive deportations of all chango wetbacks and Latino gang-banging pussies and thieves and pigs and all umbilical cord changos which you call anchor babies. Operation Wetback Part II is, and it will be, at full force. Therefore, no more gang stalkings, no more home invasion robberies, no more homelessness, no more homicides, no more theft, no more theft, no more theft, and no more assaults. And the first wetback to be deported will be Councilman Gil Sadio. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I see no further public comment.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
At long last. Members, any announcements? Announcements? Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you. The IGTCT Committee, which was supposed to begin at 1:00, because we've gone over late, we are going to begin at 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, Mr. Price.
Yes, the Economic Development Committee is supposed to meet at 1:00, we're going to be meeting now at 2:15.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any further announcements? Seeing none, any adjourning motions, colleagues? Seeing no adjourning motions, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.